Okay, six thirty. I call the Plains Warning Commission meeting to order meeting eighteen sixty one. Held at the Town Hall Meeting Room and also via Zoom. We have a forum, we have three. Full-time members and we have one alter Frank, so Frank, I'm gonna ask you to sit in as a holding member tonight.
Yes, I will.
Okay. Add agenda items?
No.
Legal notice, we have three. County East Windsor is requesting a tax amendment to create a new construction. Morel's Point Design District W and P D D within East Windsor zoning regulations. Two, Newbury Road number nine Crafton Road is requesting a special use permit for the construction of a. Three two thousand two hundred and twelve growth of building. And then sixteen thousand seven hundred ninety square ninety-three square foot building. With new paved parking lot, loading areas, site lighting. Concrete walkways, stormwater management system, associate utilities and landscaping. Three, town of East Windsor requesting a tax amendment to section six oh one point two, number of parking spaces. So this is the part of meeting is public participation. If anybody has anything they wanna talk about that's not on the agenda tonight. But the audience. Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Moving on. Uh, approval minutes, October ten twenty twenty-three, brother meeting minutes. Anybody have any edits corrections or?
I'd like to um suggest a couple of typos get corrected. Yeah, on page one in line thirty-nine. Um, it should say deputy selectman. It's missing the T. And on page three, line one twenty-five. I think there's a typo. Um, there's a word A A L. And I think the correction for that would be to strike A A L and of. So it reads, um, Mr. Boone indicated they are appearing before the commission. For a site plan approval as well as special use permit for the paving.
Anybody else? Okay, that being said, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of regular meeting eighteen sixteen. Held Tuesday, October tenth, twenty twenty-three with. The two amendments in line thirty-nine. So it says deputy with a T in it and in line one twenty-five striking. A A L and of.
Okay, motion made by Anna Dur Second.
Second.
A discussion. All the favors say aye.
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 Aye. And if.
Abstaining. As I was not here.
That's three ayes and one abstain. Okay.
Jim, that was David, right? That abstained.
That was David's statement.
Thank you.
Recede applicants is going to be P and Z twenty twenty-three. Dash twenty-seven fifty-two Main Street. Uh, modification of approved site plan map oh six one block oh five. Lot zero four one zone TV five applicant. I mean, I try again now. Right, which is that, but anyways. Um. More funds, action permits, extensions.
You should have something to be done with that. Is uh. An extension request um from two sixteen to twenty-two, so. Sure, it's a.
No, we haven't.
We just have a letter request getting a ninety day extension. Which I don't approve my laws.
Which is fine.
Yeah, so they're required upon within ninety days for one reason or another, they requesting additional ninety days, there's no specific criteria that we need to find or mend. So we can just um by motion um grant the ninety day extension.
Okay, um. I want to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant a ninety day extension for filing of approved milers. For Bulge Bridge Street Corporation re-subdivision approval. Under P Z C application twenty twenty-three dash twenty as requested.
Motion made by Anna's or second?
Second.
Second by Dave, a discussion. All the favors aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, moving on, continued public hearing. Scannick Road special use permit, construction of a hundred and twelve by thirty-two tobacco barn. To be used for a demo of tobacco hanging and drying. Or your gentleman.
Hey, JR, speaking JR, Bristol Associates here representing the uh East Windsor Historical Society with regard to the. Application for modification of special use permit and site plan approval. And I'll just briefly recap what we went through at the last meeting, this is an application for. A tobacco shed that would be located here on the site, I've highlighted here in brown. Uh, Scannick Road is located over here, the triangle, the green here, the cemetery road on this side. Um, the existing farm buildings here. Uh, Osborne House Academy. And Barber Hill School is over here. Uh, and then we've got the barber shop and I guess the courthouse located here as that. So this would be a barn that's gonna be moved from uh Belms Road up to this location, it'll be. Taken apart, brought here, uh, put back together, used for demonstrations uh of hanging and drying tobacco. Uh, at this location and. Uh, again, for old school and children who may wanna come to the museum. Uh, to do this, there were some questions at the last meeting that I was not able to answer with regard to. Power and water, I think the power question maybe kind of answered, I think if we're gonna have folks coming in here to be able to look at this. Typically, the barn may be rather dark and it's gonna require some lighting at a minimum for people to be able to see. So we are bringing power over from the other building over here in this location, but I think the water was the question. You know, what's the need for the water? I don't know, I'm not a tobacco expert for Miami, the east end, so. Uh, John Burnham is here from the Historical Society and he has a lot more information with regard to that or. Any other questions you may have in terms of the particulars and how this may function or maybe some others, so. At this point, uh, I think let's have John come up and.
Sure, is there a question on the water still? Water is actually used in steaming of tobacco. Electricity is also used in the. In tobacco operations. If you remember, and you should remember. Mulmike Barnes was shade tobacco. All the machines were electric sewing machines that were made right here on Depot Street by M A B. Where we saved and cooled. And so electricity and water are necessary. And it's uh, it's, we're talking a yard item, we're not talking. A waterfall. Give me feedback on that comment, the water. It, it is handy for fire suppression, yeah, garden hose.
So how are you handling, if you're pumping water in, how are you handling where it goes? Are you gonna put a water storage, you're gonna put a septic tank in?
No, we're not doing wastewater, we're doing the yard, like, you know, out your yard, a yard hydrant. Open it up and then the water comes out of the garden hose and that's it.
Okay.
It's not, there's already one very close.
Yeah, there's one located here, there'll be another one. Day, so previously. Outsides that you've probably seen them on a farm, you know, many times, a horse. Sitting up the AI. Yeah, it's got a hose connection on it, that's, that's what they're talking about, it's all. There's no water that'll be plumped into the.
Okay, not bathroom, none of that. What else? Oh, I wanna make one comment before we start. I already started. The last. Uh, and Peg, you can put this in the minutes. We were here two, two weeks ago, Danny and I were here. We, we work at a place and we got a, when I jumped up at seven oh seven or something, it was because my phone was vibrating and the girl at the farm said. Uh, uh, wash machine room is full of smoke. Goodbye, got my brother. Probably two minutes later, heard Bradford Fire Truck following us down.
Totally understandable.
And I did throw a call back in here.
You did.
Okay, so just like.
Yeah, we fully understand.
Then to take a loan in, here's more. Yeah, we talked. So. Going back there, this is a tobacco shed, this is not a tobacco barn. It's, it's just uh split in there, but they're sheds and I don't know why they call it barn. Good observation is the. Your flag has five villages represented and Scannick is right there, right above it, it's a tobacco shed. This indicates that tobacco and barn board, I don't know why they call it barn board, behind it, it's a part of our heritage, all farms had. Tobacco. That that was part of their cash crop. In nineteen sixty, when we moved into one oh two Scannick Road, there were at least ten sheds. That I remember. Within uh half a mile of the church. And they're on that picture. You saw the picture from Jay, you know, Ariel. Anyways, this shed is going virtually in the same location as. The shed that uh Morel's. Our, the Barber Farm had there and it's, it's also on that picture, you can see the picture? Would you have that, would you have that on it?
I don't, did not, no, I'm not here, but.
No, I'm gonna show you. It is.
Thank you. Do you prefer I ask my questions at the end or ask?
We'll, we'll go down one by one, we'll ask questions.
At the end.
We'll, we'll, you like your presentation down, then we'll go down the road. And then we'll open it back up to.
Same location as original. I, I written minutes, you asked about if the shed is gonna be fired. I think that's more a function of. How the fall goes. If it's dry and stuff dries. They don't have to fire it, cause firing lots money. And if November. Comes and they need to humid. Humidify it, they'll wrap it in plastic. And they'll take the stuff down a little bit damp, unless they, if they don't have a damp, they'll make it, make it moist. So there was one comment in the minutes, I think you made it.
Would you fire it or be propane or charcoal?
That would, that would be up, so the concept here is. Tobacco will be grown off site. Seven acre shed holds. Three and a half acres of tobacco. A seven bed shed. Three and a half acres of tobacco. Would, the best plan would be not to hang lowest bed, so people could get in there, have that first six feet open so you could go in there. And I'm gonna actually uh make this comment too. I have some property with sheds on them and people actually ask me if they can walk in there and just smell it, believe it or not, the kids that used to.
Tobacco?
Yeah, they. A lot of people love the smell of curing, curing tobacco, believe it or not, especially if you work with them as kids. They just like. So Jim, I think you made a comment.
Sure.
A straight shed versus a what shed? In the minutes, said something about a straight tobacco shed, this is a straight tobacco, not an L shed, this is not right, this is a straight seven bed. Came, it's coming from the Titus Pudgeman Barn. And the picture there shows it. Alright, so then there you go. So we'll, we'll go down the line, Frank, do you have any questions?
Yeah. President Lee, do you have any idea how much? You're gonna hang in shed, are you gonna hang three and a half acres?
I'd like to hang three acres.
Or you're gonna hang a couple of beds?
Three acres, fill the shed up. Top. Everything except.
Perline right down.
Right down.
Well, my question is. If you're gonna do it for demonstration and for information. Why do you need three and a half acres? Don't you figure, don't you figure a couple of beds? From the perline, that's the top down to the bottom. Would be sufficient for demonstration? And I guess the follow-up question tonight would be, John. If you're gonna have three and a half acres in it, are you gonna rent it to someone to put three and a half acres up?
No rents involved here. If we're lucky enough to get a farmer to hang this shed. They're gonna wanna put three acres in. To make it worth. Their time to come there, hang it and do their stuff in our shed. It's, it doesn't behoove us to rent buildings for the society, it doesn't do it. Puts us in a different bracket.
And then, okay, let's assume you're gonna put three and a half acres in there.
Three.
Three acres, yeah. Seven and a half, yeah, that's right. What are you gonna do with it?
Then the farmer takes it and he sells it, he does some, whatever he does.
So the farmer, yeah, okay.
They, they grow it off site. They bring it in in Regans.
Yep, yep.
There are guys hanging it. There are guys take it down, they provide us with a certificate of insurance and all of that stuff. And we get to. Have. This is the day they're gonna strip tobacco. We've been advertised though, this is the day they're gonna hang tobacco, even the three acres, you know, it only takes two hours or three hours to hang the whole thing, so we gotta be quick. So we gotta work with an individual. To actually do this part for us, we're not.
Did you have somebody in mind to do this?
And he, and they actually came and helped us with the location. And it was interesting that they picked the same location that the Bartletts or the Barbers did. A hundred years ago, that's, that's, you said this would be the best spot.
What makes this one?
So the sheds that were north and south orientation, you don't see any of those anymore, because they all blew over. The ones that were east and west are still standing, so if you go up and down the skin, uh, Connecticut River, all the sheds, when you fly over Braden Field and you look down. They're all going uh. East and west.
The year.
Yeah, so, so they learned.
So, um.
Craig, you've done it?
Yeah, exactly. Be sure.
Yes.
Wow, yeah, exactly. Okay. Um. So I guess my first question was you had made a comment about our history and all the other barns that we had had in this town. Did all those old barns have electricity?
Some did and some didn't, if they were close enough to be. Near the, the farms there, like if you look at the, the collection of. Of course, those barns are right there, if they could have run a line out, they would. But uh. They either had electricity, they brought a generator.
I, I can answer that. What would happen is you get a, you get these foggy mornings like this morning, it's, it's called a tobacco damp, and what it does is it dampens the, the leaves. So they won't, we touch them, they're very viable, so what we would do is we'd run a generator and we'd get out maybe four o'clock in the morning. Start taking down and packing it, so to answer your question of electricity. When we had generators, we did, if we didn't, we used to use lanterns or car lights or whatever we put. Even though there was power in, in the area, not the tobacco barns didn't necessarily have electricity. That's correct, it wasn't, they weren't designed and built to have. Part of the construction was not to. Okay, so the construction wasn't there originally to have electricity and we're trying to be authentic as the Historical Society, why are we bringing power to it? Just, I, again, I'm just, I'm new here, just asking questions.
Well. Again, the sewing machines, the steamers. Any handfuls that the guys have that need to do it.
But were those in the barns or were those somewhere else?
All farmers were different.
Okay.
But, but they all had. Generators. If you look at the sheds, they took down thrall sheds, I don't know if you remember. Thrall sheds on the airport, the big red ones that they. Amazon is now, right?
Yes.
If you'd ever see outside those sheds, they had generators on hay wagons with five hundred gallon propane. And they would take them from shed, shed, shed.
Okay.
Um, think of your life without electricity. Even in, even in the construction of the shed, it's gonna be handy to have some electricity there to build it and maintain.
Electricity through the midst of the property too, on our old houses and everything, there's lights were displayed in there, we, we're not gonna hurt the county. Here is seeing lamps, keep it effective, we wanna terror display.
Okay. Um, what size of power are you running into there, is it?
I'm gonna say maybe two twenty amp circuits.
Two twenty amp circuits. Two twenty, two, no, two. Twenty, two each twenty amp circuits, hundred twenty volts, one fifty volts?
Yeah, yeah.
No. Three phase power, no.
That's expensive.
Okay, just, just asking.
Yeah. I'm running some kind of circuit right around them, yeah.
Um, if you're going to the trouble of, of having that, are you gonna have all the emergency exit lights and everything wired up that? How far are you guys gonna go if you're bringing power and you're worried about? Water for fire suppression, you talk about fire suppression, does that mean you're gonna be putting emergency exit lights in it? And what happens to this authentic barn is no longer.
They'll be pretty well.
Becoming authentic because we're adding all of these things to it. So either it's authentic barn or.
And some receptive. That's, that's it, light bulbs and accept.
What about?
We're pretty good at hiding stuff.
What about foundations and floors, are we gonna, is it gonna be a?
Well, the shed is built on tapered, on uh tapered, that shed is built on potato barrels that were hand poured, that's why they're crumbling, because it's falling and uh. This, the new. Technology which is from consolidating is a five foot tall tapered. Tapered four. Pier. So it's one foot square to top. It's two by two on the bottom, it's got a, a five foot long mud hook in it that runs up the six by six, the bolts are pretty uplifting and. And then to keep it there. With floor, it will be gravel. Okay, probably. Nice gravel.
So no part of the floor will be finished.
No, it'll all be ground. No, it's, it's, no, it's, no, just gravel.
Okay. Uh. I think that covers all my questions for right now.
And?
At the last meeting when you weren't here, um. Speculation started on. It being intended for school buses and kids to come. But I'm hearing that the, there's. One day when the farmer brings in the tobacco and hangs it and another day when. It leaves.
So if.
Is, so is it a? Multi-day thing where it stays open for viewing or is it a? Two days, one to hang and one to remove?
So, that's good, thanks for bringing that up, the school bus thing.
Yeah.
The third graders do come there and they do come in in three school buses. Uh, and we do give tours. And we have to be. Normally they come in in November. Typically, they always come in in November, just it was cold enough, everybody had to wear a jacket. And they would probably go over there and see a tobacco shed with tobacco hanging at that point. I don't think they'd have it down, they might have it down, some of it might still be left up, because I'm sure we can have some of it still left up year round, like you're talking, a small section. You know, twenty lathe or something hanging. And I'm hoping they have some sewn. That, well, that was sewn, leaves, that's brought, that shade and hopefully they have spears, spear and hopefully they have oak ladder. All the different styles. For them to walk over and see it, now they'll also see, and maybe you guys know, maybe you don't know. The different styles of tobacco sheds, this particular shed has hinged doors. Every third, I was sorry, on the sides, opens with hinges. Uh, so. John Dingus has some hinged and some with a, with a bar slack across the bottom, we walk up, you can pull it out, the five boards come out at once. And they do that because they can shut the shed down in a, in a flash, if the storm comes in. They come down, they pull them up, the lathe falls down and they slam shut and, and off.
Rain doesn't come.
So, but to answer your other question, there's a fair amount of coordination with any of these tours of anybody. You have to plan it. It has to be in November, so that's Michael, the president usually organizes those. And we will have tobacco hanging to come in November, if you come in September, you might see it being hung. And who knows what we could do with this? You know, as a demonstration, educational thing. You know, maybe, you know. Say it again?
I think somebody said maybe you're open on Saturdays for a. Part of the day.
Yeah, we're open Saturdays.
When people come on Saturday, they could.
Nine to twelve, and we get a lot of people that just call, yes, they could go up there. Yeah, they can go up, yes, look at the shed on Saturday and, yeah. Whatever phase it is at that time, it might just be empty, it might just be raining, it could be waiting or whatever, yeah.
But you could put, I'll say, display boards and educational, you know.
But they should be in there, yeah. Regans and. Setters.
Old tractors.
We have some of that already, we actually have regans from the Sabonis Farm. We have some of that stuff already, but it would be nice to have it.
Of course.
In an area that's tobacco.
Yeah.
It's a big part of our history, did I answer your question all of it?
Yeah, no, that's good, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the hard questions.
Sure.
So last meeting, I got beat up pretty good by Jay and Marie. Um. I wanna know a couple things. Um, one, you said you guys are gonna strip in, uh, strip in November? Most of the barns are stripped by now, October, they're done.
And I think that's again a function of the weather, when it's dry and it's ready, they take, they take it down. I've seen them take it down as late as in the spring.
Most, most sheds are not taken down, as a matter of fact, it's just coming over, there's a whole bunch of. Uh. That are not taken down, but again, it could be, it could be, it depends upon the weather and the dampness.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, a lot of farmers can't afford the. To fire them, uh, to, to steam them, so they wait for the nice foggy mornings.
So the other big question I have to ask, what can you do to guarantee us this is not gonna turn toward a better facility? That's a big question, this is why all these people are here.
They can flip it on, flip it up, I'm, I'm glad to.
So I'm, I'm, I asked you last meeting.
I was at a fire, I was at a fire, I know, I know you were, so I'm just asking the same question I asked. Believe that. I waited since June twenty-sixth becoming four new. Three minutes in, I did that call, that's that.
And if that's, totally, yeah.
So there are no guarantees in mind, our intention is to have this be a drying. Demonstration of a tobacco shed. As represented. As represented. Anything that we do, that's wrong, if we have people watching us, believe it or not, every move we make, somebody is watching us. And they're writing it down, they have cameras and pictures. And there's nothing that we can get away with.
Nobody trust you? Oh, excuse me, it's.
Yeah. That's good. And, and, there it is.
Good job.
But. Everything we've done.
Sorry.
We come in with a special use permit for the ice cream social, we have all of those, we've got insurance policies and the cop and border body. The health district, we do all that stuff for under a microscope. We have to do what we say we're gonna do, we'll never get through to you guys again if we don't. Any, I'm over there.
So the other. For the question I have, that, oh. On the application, you guys write, Hawk, we don't write, write down just for the tobacco barn, why it has to be. Categorized as demonstration of tobacco and hanging, drying, that's. We've had other applicants come through here and just a tobacco barn. That's all they put down on the. Application. Let me, just look, look at their page, that's all.
So I think the simple answer is, is, is the Historical Society, they're not farmers. They're putting this up, preserve some of the heritage of, of. East Windsor and really the Connecticut River Valley, it's not just East Windsor. But they're not farmers, and they wanted to put up a tobacco shed. They could have gone to the Town Hall and got a building permit and put it up, and they would have never been here at all. They're here because they're the Historical Society and they know they need a permit, they know they need a special permit for you to do this on this property because of what they are. And that's why they're here, and they're here to do what they say they're gonna do, and if it's gonna be something different than that, then they've gotta come back here or go through you again. No different than anybody else, they're not gonna put this up and say, okay, we got away with it, now we're gonna have a big party, that's not gonna happen. It's gonna be used for what they say they're gonna use it for, if that ever changes. They'll be back here again, all these people will be back here again, and we're gonna go through the same thing all over again, that's not the plan. This building is thirty-two feet wide with a dirt floor, a gravel floor. It's gonna be used for. It's gonna be used for agriculture and for demonstration purposes, for people to see exactly what they say they're gonna do. And nothing else. And, and I'm stuck, I apologize, I didn't mean to upset you or offend you. I, I've been coming here for almost forty years, and I never would knowingly stand up here. And represent something that I do know would be true.
And again, I just asked a question.
You can ask, yeah, so. And I, I'm gonna go to the track record of the East Windsor Historical Society. And, and I, I will debate this. Ten years ago, we had the academy, the barber shop, and courthouse. And then we were lucky enough to get. Carl's house, or the house, uh, one fifteen.
One thirteen.
One foot, one thirteen, which was virtually falling in, and it was a mess. You know fault of the previous owners. He, he hit some top line. And that's that, and we were able to go in there, and right now, I hope you guys take the opportunity to go see it, it's, it's spectacular.
It's beautiful.
Seventeen eighty-five, it's spectacular. We were lucky enough, and again, I had to fight. To get the Parker Hill Schoolhouse, which was virtually falling in the southern hole, like ten Griffin Road. At our expense, to get that dismantled and brought back here, to have that be another spectacular. Facility, the schoolhouse alone, just looking at, and if nobody ever walks in it again, is a wonderful example of an eighteen sixty-one. Schoolhouse, there were twelve in this town, now there's one. Well, two, the only Skip Daly's house, skip it's. Skip Daly's house has been fixed over so many times, you'd never know it was the schoolhouse, so the tobacco shed alone. And I do hope it's display, and I do hope there's tobacco, and it dries and people can smell it, but just even have a. It'll be pristine when it's done, it'll be on concrete, it'll, it'll last about a hundred. Hundred years, as long as. You know, it, it'll last a long time. Virtually, we've lost ninety percent of the sheds in this town. Ninety percent, you just lost forty-two sheds on plantation road. Those are gone, they're never coming back. And most of the other sheds in town are not sheds, but ha- I'd say half of them have been converted to other uses.
Better. They're building a lot of sheds.
Up in the, in the Anfield area, they're going, they're going.
Ten and twelve acre sheds.
Yes. Yeah, and that's wonderful.
I have a quick question. The historical society has to go through and take this whole building down, this whole shed down, put it up. That takes a lot of time, a lot of money. How does the historical society? I don't know if it's in my prerogative to ask this question, but I would ask it, how does the historical society fund that? Oh, I mean, obviously, John, you have, you and, and your construction people have to. Make a living. So to take this down and put up a new one, and. Do you get it from income from the? From the historical society?
We get it through donations.
Donation. I, I know it's probably none of my business, or probably not.
It's a fair, it's a fair, Frank, it's a fair question, we need to. We do apply for some grants. We do, we do have some income at the society. And it's not that much, you'd think it would be cheaper to build it, and when it's not. It's, it's really not a big deal to take this shit.
Well, I, I, I was saying again, as, as I said last, last meeting. There's an air in a room that, there's an air in this room where people have a very suspicious. Atmosphere here that you're up to something about good.
Yeah, that's wonderful, thanks.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
Thanks for bringing that up.
And that's, that's what, that's what it is, and.
Really.
And. I, I don't think that's fair to you, and I don't think it's fair to the town.
It's not fair to.
And I'm not speaking up for you, I'm doing what I have to do as a commissioner.
Yeah.
But I, I, that's, that is not, that is not a, a fair thing to do.
So, so. I'm only a link in the chain, historical society, right, Elsver Stotter started in nineteen sixty-five, and then Jerry Bootenoff, and then this person and that person, I'm just taking my turn. Moving this thing along in history. We, we, we run a first class, beautiful facility. It, it, it's spectacular, it used to be really ugly. When Carl's house was there and they. When the forty acres that we purchased around the blue barn and all the rest of it, that was virtually. A dump. And now it's just, it's just mowed and it's hay. And it's all locked up, getting in and out of the building, blah, 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 it's, it's a very clean run facility. And up until this year, who did, provided the town with this ice cream sorcher at our expense, aren't it, well, that's not, that was not cheap, put that on. And that was not easy, but then, that was a lot of work. We did cancel it this year, and we did cancel it during, one year during the COVID, but. Probably for the last ten or fifteen or twenty years, they, we've had it. Pretty big, pretty big show.
Trying to get more questions, are you good?
Yeah, uh, um, yeah.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and I'm gonna ask people in the public to speak one at a time, and please state your names for the record. Anybody? Okay, Richard Henry first.
I didn't read.
Okay, sorry.
Like to speak. My name is Gail La Bear, and one seventeen Scantic Road. I do have just some. Information I'd like to share or thoughts, I should say, for you, and I always write them, and so I can say I try. I'm sorry, we won't forget you this time too. Okay, my name is Gail La Bear, my husband Lester, and I have lived at one seventeen Scantic Road since nineteen seventy-six. It seems like we're here once again to comment on an application that has to do with our neighbors at one fifteen Scantic Road. As in the past, our key concern. Is to ensure that any permits submitted and approved. Does not have any commercial intent, either now or in the future, and aligns with the P O C D, which is supposed to be a guide for zoning. At the last meeting, I shared a few points or thoughts that I thought you should review, um, and I have a few more for this application. Uh, that I'd like to share. The first one, in two thousand and fourteen, a building permit was obtained for one thirteen Scantic Road by John. For the East Windsor Historical Society. It was for a foundation for future reception and storage shed. And the rebuilding of a dismantled barn. Demo to take place at a later date. It stated that the barn was located on Phelps Road. My question is, is this the same barn, and if so, why isn't it being relocated to the foundation? That is currently in place, and it also currently has electrical and water hookups. Number two, the condition of the current barn on Phelps Road. Will obviously call for a lot of repair, I think if you've seen the pictures. If it is truly just going to be a tobacco barn, what restrictions will be put in place? To ensure that during this reconstruction, it doesn't become more of a enclosed structure with. Things that weren't implied, so right now, there is a, I guess we'll put. Electrical, I guess we'll put, you know, the one twenty, I guess we'll have the gravel, where does that come in play, that, that it's seriously documented? And the draft approved. Number three, the narrative listed on the latest building permit states, the barn was to be used for demo of tobacco hanging and drying. That would keep it assessed as tax exempt, and I think John alluded to that, that that would put him in a different bracket. If it weren't. So why then was the president of the society indicated to a member that they might be renting it out to a tobacco farmer? Any rental of this building would reclassify it as not tax exempt. And they would owe property taxes. Wouldn't this need to be recorded in the assessors office, and how do we manage that? Number four, the president of the society also shared with a member that they were thinking of renting out the blue barn, the infamous blue barn. Under tax laws, the assessor would have to reclassify that asset. Because they are five oh one three T. C three, sorry. What is the oversight for this building and all the other barns to ensure that they are not being used to generate income and taxes are not being paid? Number five, there is also concern. By neighbors that enhancements were made to the property on Cemetery Road that they own. Over the last several years since they took ownership, and no building permits were pulled, at least none that could be found in the records. Enhancements such as new roofs on several barns, electrical work in at least one barn, drainage work. Number six, during the last special permit process for an event facility. It was declared, one of the drivers behind their proposal was that they needed income. Where are they getting the money to fund this project, and how is expanding their footprint for maintenance make any sense? So all of these. Thoughts or points make you pause and stop and think. In conclusion, after what has gone on in the past. And the items I listed last week. And now this week, you can understand where doubts about this latest proposal arrives from. Our biggest concern is once that barn is in place. What will stop this small handful of people, not the society, they don't vote on these things. Members do not vote, they've had no vote, as we stated last week, they have no meetings, they haven't for two years. So this, it's a small group of people in that society, what's? They'll show up again with some new idea and enhancement to a special permit. And that is our concern, like, how many more times will we have to come forward with this stuff? I also attached a copy of that building permit from two thousand fourteen. The other thing I just wanna address about these schoolchildren, I must miss them, I work at home, I've worked at home for the last four years, I've never seen a school bus there. It's been years, so I'm gonna have to call the school and find out when they'll be coming, so I can keep a watch out and wait to them when they come this year in November time. Um, they also are only open nine to twelve, so you allude to masses of people coming through, once again, I live next door. I can tell you there are no huge masses of people, and I challenge you to show some kind of registration book where guests rest and. Register in to, um, prove me wrong, which is fine, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. So, um, I wanna thank you all again for your time and effort and hearing, and once again, I'll tell you again, you've got a. Tough job in all you do for planning and zoning, so I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, anybody else we should speak?
All right, I'm not drinking yet, but.
Name for the record, sir.
Abbott Schultz, nine Cemetery Road. East Windsor. A couple of questions for you, is, starting with, I go over frequently on Saturday mornings with society. I never see a visitor. Rarely. Yeah, I think I've seen one so far this year, so it would be interesting to know how many active visiting the place and how much usage we're getting as far as income. Um. Second is, who's paying for the plans to do all this work? The society, so that's not our purpose, I understand. Okay, thank you, uh. The position of where this barn is, we could not be further from the Osborne House, where people would come in and visit, and then how would they get to this tobacco field, so a bus comes in and stops. How does the bus get down to the field? Where does it go in and where does it go out, there's gotta be some driveways that aren't there yet. Okay, that's also my understanding that there, right now. Is a, um. Connoisseur. On this property for twenty years to raise. Uh, pay. That they're totally ignoring. So there's someone in the room who has rights to this property for twenty years to raise hay, which they're totally ignoring. And also, what is their ability here, they're not the president, I asked the president if he would show up today. He refused to show up, to answer any questions for me. You mean, so it would be nice if the president of the association would show up, so. You're not the president, you're not the president, you're not the president. President's not here, the vice president's not here, the secretary's not here, and the treasurer's not here, so who's here to represent the society? And what is, and they even come here and present this when they have no authority. I don't believe they have any authority, I'm a lifetime member, I can't find out how many members we have. According to the tax records, we had forty-five dollars in income last year from members, which means we only have five members. And a society has five members, they tell you, well, this, things are gonna happen, but there's nothing going on there. And there's nothing gonna go on there, so this is built for an nefarious reason, for construction, to make money. Um. Let's see, I had one or two other things, you have the buses. Coming, they have to come in and out, and where they would come in and out is a good question. You know, as far as safety goes and things like that, when the park, the kids, you couldn't find a further place for those kids to walk. From the Osborne House to where that barn is, to see this hay, to see the tobacco being grown, there's no further walk. So why would you put it there, there's a perfectly good foundation right next to the Osborne House. Which has got all the pilings in that they're talking about, all the gravel in, has electricity and water right now, that they could put this barn on. Put it there, but nobody asked anybody, they just make this decisions on their own, for whatever reason, I don't think that's the right thing to do. For a society that's supposedly. A nonprofit for the betterment of town, and I'll end with the last thing, if for some reason, and somebody threatened me the other day, would you rather have houses there? Probably yes, but the thing is, you know who the betterment is, or the worst? I would say betterment, the, the. Benefactor of this thing, if it fails, the town of East Windsor ends up with the property. So I don't think you really want the property, I think the thing wanted to succeed, I think I wanted to succeed, that's why I bought my property there. So I'll end with that thing, I am a member, a lifetime member, I would like it to succeed, I joined for the right reason, and I think there's. Good reason for everybody in the room wants it to do well, I have a lot of people visiting, who canceled the ice cream social? Who makes these decisions, and nobody tells anybody, that was the one good fundraiser we had, Ice Cream Social made a lot of money. Gone, just, gone, what happened, nobody will tell you. You ask a question, you get this and this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, Marie, this is the primary story. Um. My concern, my concern, um. And I'm glad the gentleman said they can support the historical society. Historical society, all the years that I've lived in town, have done one project after another moving forward, and I get. The people not wanting to have a blue barn, for whatever reason, they're going to build that, and I'll respect that. But where I got upset last meeting was the tone in which. Comment for me, um. That's wrong, they're here representing the historical society, um, these guys have done more work on their own. As volunteers in this town than I will ever be able to do, um. And yes, the social, people tell me all the time, why isn't social being done, why, I don't know, why it's not being done, or asked on, it's just. Not advertised, I don't know what's happening, they don't want to destroy the society. But I would hate this animosity to continue where at some point, the few volunteers that are running that operation. Because it costs money to run it, thank God they have people that are willing to donate to them, keep it running, um, and they've done an excellent job. I think that battle is assigned to East Windsor, uh, we can all speculate, I can all speculate. But it's the town's job to follow, make sure they follow their laws and regulations. Um, and I believe in one, I. I mean, go back to both people speculating, people for years that I hated John Byrne, and John Byrne hated me. Little did they know, we didn't even know each other, you know, so I don't go on speculation, um, but I just. Do what you have to do as a board, and I know you will. Respect the people that are voluntarily trying, because I go by there, I see people mowing, they're mowing voluntarily. I see people, and they're moving stuff around voluntarily, I know when I brought a group of kids in there. Nancy Matthews came and volunteered to walk us around, so if people aren't using it. That's a shame, because they should be able to market and have people going up, going over there, you, and you can't have a focal place, can't. Can't say you want to exist and then question where their money's coming from. They're a nonprofit, they can get donations wherever they want, I mean. You know, you can speculate all you want, but, you know, somebody's gotta be paying. For the buildings to be maintained, so.
Thank you, Marie. Anybody else? Oh, sorry.
Hi, Farmer two forty-seven South River Street, um. I was not here last night, I did return this, I have to go on and read that out, and, um, you know, I. I live in an extremely old house in town, and, um. I. Just had sheds across the street for me to have them moved, people to, um. A new building going in, I'm complaining about that, got rid of all my car merger, um, but. If there is tobacco hanging, some of the barns have still remained there, um. And I'm all for saving as much as we can, and if we can get people and take them, they won't jump there. And um, we go, I go to the historical society for almost anything that they ever offer. And um, I went with my granddaughter last year for the Ice Cream Social. And I actually was in one of the barns saying, wow, all of this tobacco equipment that you have in here that I had been at one point finding out in my yard. In my whole day, and they were explaining it to me. And I, I remember talking to somebody saying, like, let's back to the museum, would be an awesome thing. So then when I saw this, I was like, oh good, they're actually coming there, and um. And I don't know about the blue barn, I wasn't involved in any of that, but I think your job is to look at from what it is. What they're asking to put there, not where do they get their honey, who runs what? Who's supposed to buy, or who, you know, and who didn't tell somebody something, that's, that's not your purpose, your purpose is to look at.
We realize that.
All this place before you. And decide solely on the validity of that, with bearing in mind that. Overridingly for anybody comes here, the historical society or private developer or anybody, that they're coming here and telling you the truth. People aren't coming here to laugh and get caught after the battle, so, um, I think they do a great job. If it gets there, we'll go with it, um, and. Appreciate it for what it is, all of the things that happened.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? So my other, only other question was. Say this gets approved and goes through. I just wanna be forthright, what's gonna stop them from doing temporary seasonal events?
Yes, well, yeah, so two things, one. This, everything. Um, everything contained within the public hearing record is the basis that you're making this decision. They sit here over two or three meetings and represent they're gonna do X, and then they do Y, they're violating your special permit. Town can then take action on that multiple, through multiple avenues, just like a variance, you can't ask for variance for a shed and build something else. Separate from that, not in the specific comments, but particularly with the type of building that's being proposed. From a fire marshal and building department perspective, you can't now start bringing in people for gatherings and events and, and have. All kinds of things happening in a building that has a dirt or stone floor that was. Constructed or relocated for the purposes of storing tobacco. There are occupancy standards, and if those things were to occur, it would be health code violation, building code violation, fire marshal.
So my question, they're bringing children in there?
Right, so if the, the use as proposed is part of what they're doing on the property. They're gonna start conducting other types of events. It's not part and parcel of what they're showing here, it would require another modification to the permit. Building itself doesn't require the permit, the, the, the use on the property now is especially permitted use, so they're modifying that use. Cause they wanna bring people there, so they're gonna expand that scope further, would fall right back into the perjury commission.
So should we ask the questions of hours of operation and things like that?
So, I mean, the facility, you could certainly ask them to clarify if they're planning on making any substantial change to the current hours of operation. But they're, alls they're asking for is this, this, the deviation from what they're currently doing. So they're open six days a week, two days a week, whatever it is, and they're gonna conduct this within the parameters of their existing operation. Um, you know, if, they're not asking to change sort of that.
So it's okay for them to bring fifty school kids through here?
If they're currently, if that's currently part of what they're doing, then I, I don't see how that creates an issue, okay? Fifty schoolkids, five times a day, six days a week, fifty weeks a year is a different story. But, but if people are visiting the property, you know, more than once every year or two, part and parcel of that.
So they build it, they put up their, you know, the tobacco letter hanging dry, and they bring the kids in there, they can't. I just wanna get out that they can't throw parties, they can't do any of that stuff.
Not within that shed?
Not in that shed.
They've stood here and said that during the hearing, and all of the reviews, all of the planned comments from staff, department heads, everything has been predicated on. It being used for specific, a very specific purpose. And all of those issues with fire, fire emergency exits, fire suppression. All of this, yeah, but all that stuff applies to them, if they wanted to start doing that, which obviously we need to, so. There are plenty of mechanisms in place beyond just planning and zoning if they were gonna do that.
Anybody else on commission have any more questions? Okay, last time for the public, everybody good?
I have a question.
Uh, state your name for the record, please.
Uh, Tyler Nettz at Nine Cemetery Road.
Go ahead, sir.
Um, I, I would just like to add, um. I, you know, I don't, I don't see a huge issue with a, with a demonstration for tobacco. I would just wonder why it wouldn't be closer to the existing village. Uh, so that it may be more convenient uh, to make tours. Um, in conjunction with that, uh, there's a huge mound of. Uh, wonderful soil that um, John, Dan and myself and my wife. Uh, we grew pumpkins and squash uh, last year. Um, you know, I think that would be another, you know, wonderful addition. To perhaps having these tours and having these kids walk away with, uh, you know, picking their own pumpkin. If that's gonna be the time of year. Um, that this, you know, these events are happening. Um, but I think the location uh, for me is, you know, kind of disconcerting. Where it, it should be probably closer to the village. Um, where then, you know, these tour buses could actually take a tour of the entire facility. And see the complete history of this historical society.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so there's a public hearing, so I'm gonna need a, is there any good questions?
I actually have one, um. Sorry for my vague question, based on where you guys have this proposed barn, where's parking? If you're gonna have school buses with children come in, where are the school buses? I'm sorry, I apologize, that was asked previously. I was, not here, so.
No, so. School buses have always come in on the academy driveway. They, they go between the uh, garage apartment and the barber shop. And they park in our asphalt parking lot, and they stay there. And these kids get off the school buses in small groups, maybe ten. There's historical society people stationed at each spot. And I gotta tell you, this is hard, here, you know, there's feet, and the kids, kids have no problem, they're not, there's no parking. There's no parking for that. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this comment about the school buses and the meetings, here it comes, we have plenty of meetings. And we've had plenty of school buses. In fact, it only seems wrong, wrong, really. I know, cause I've been there as a dossier. And my particular thing was the courthouse and the outhouse. And the kids got such a big deal out of the three, three seater, three hole one, right? That when they went back to their schoolrooms, they drew pictures and talked about their experience, and they sent the letters back to the society. They came in yellow school buses. I'm just saying, that's fair. And what, what are your?
That's good, sir, sir, just a panel. We're leaving back and forth.
So I, just for one clarification, Jay Erskine, Jay Russo, we did talk about it a little bit last week, because they did ask, is it too far, but. As John alluded to, when I think we talked about last week, was at the last meeting. Is it the buses do park, they come in by the academy, they park there. There's pull offs on the side where they go, and the kids basically walk everywhere, as John said, the kids don't have any trouble walking. If some of the teachers do, there's something stand, I don't know, but it's really not that far, uh, and there's. Driveways and pathways all the way, it's not like they're walking through the fields and high grass, it's, it's simple to walk to. And it was about six hundred feet from up towards the academy back to where the barn is, so it's not really a long walk. The kids have no issue with that.
Yeah, my question was just, I hadn't, I was wondering where they were gonna park everybody, I didn't see any mention of any parking, or any. Billings laid down or, or, you know, was it entered from Cemetery Road, it was all gonna come here. They parked on the existing pavement, nobody did that.
Okay. Okay, that being said, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on application P Z twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. For a special use permit modification with site plan.
Motion made by Ann, or second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mike, you have anything else before, is this, is the motion, the same motion from last week?
Yeah, there should not be, and there's a updated memo from Ruth.
It's the memo from last week.
Yeah. There's anything, any questions you have or anything specifically, why?
Does anybody feel ready to vote on this?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, I'll attend a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. Application P Z twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. For a special use permit modification with site plan, modification of. The site plan, special use permit from five thirteen. Twenty fourteen to allow construction of a tobacco barn at one fifteen St. Antic Road, East Windsor. The owner applicant is East Windsor Historical Society Inc. This motion comes with eleven conditions, it references. The plans prepared by J R Russo as outlined in. The ten three twenty-three memo to the commission from Ruth Ann Calabresi. And the eleven conditions um, are in the same memo.
Motion is made by Ann, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any discussion? I, I just wanna say one thing before we vote on this, um. It, it's kinda hard to stop a tobacco barn that's put in the middle of a field where it's supposed to be. And the applicant had shown nothing but. No, the right intention that I could bring, anything but hanging dry of tobacco. So it meets the P L C D, so I just wanna put that on the record.
I'd like to add that, um, I think the applicant has. Done a good job of answering the questions both the board and the public asked. And um, as Mike indicated, what we're approving is. What they have indicated the application is for.
That being said, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Moving on. Continue here, oh no, new public hearing. New public hearing, you can do these.
So I was gonna ask, since that's a commission application and I am B as, as an applicant, do you wanna?
What order?
Go out of order so that they can present.
Have a motion that we go out of order? Um. Can you hear B first before A?
I'll make a motion that we move application P Z twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five. For seventy-four Newbury Road and nine Craftsman Road before, um. A and C that are both town applications.
Motion, oh sorry, motion made by Ann, or second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any discussion?
You can stand there, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Can we, you can come right up.
Yeah, for one, Lindsay had me sit up there, I'll do, I can stand.
Where you want? Okay, hold on, I'm gonna bring you up. Okay, it's gonna be uh, seventy-four, a new public hearing, seventy-four Newbury Road. And nine Craftsman Road is requesting a special use permit for the instruction of a thirty-two thousand three hundred twelve foot square building. And a sixteen thousand seven hundred three square foot building, the new paid parking, loading areas. Site lighting, concrete walkways, stormwater management systems associated. Uh, Penske Trucks Leasing Co. L P Newbury Road Enterprises M L C, Lord Director.
Thank you, uh, for the record, my name's Megan Hope, I'm an attorney with Altrin Pearson and Glastonbury. Um, I'm here tonight representing Penske Truck Leasing Co, L P. Um, regarding the uh, reference uh, application. Um, here with me tonight, um, I have Tim Poole, he's our uh, project engineer with B L Company, he's on Zoom because he's sick, so. I had him stay at home to protect you guys, uh, but he'll be doing the screen share and pointing to everything. Um, so I feel like that was a good option, also with us is uh, John Wiltinger, he's right below. Tim on the screen, he's a representative uh, from Penske, they're director of facilities. Um, also on the Zoom is Mike Kirkor, he's the traffic engineer with B L Companies. There's Mike over there on the right side of the screen, and also in person with me is um, Jack, Jack Valverde, he's a senior regional. Regional facility manager for Penske. Um, so uh, a couple of items I wanted to uh, put into the record is that we did. Send out the required mailing, um, I did email Ruth a copy, but she wanted me to bring the original certificates of mailing, I have that. Uh, the public hearing signs were posted both on Newbury Road and Craftsman Road, and an original affidavit was given today. Um, Mike to Katrina, I have a copy, I don't know if you wanted this, but the original book of office here. So Tim, can you start uh, sharing the PowerPoint? Thank you. So um, again, as I mentioned, we're representing Penske, uh, they are the contract purchaser of. Uh, approximately a little over nineteen acres, which is situated between Newbury Road to the north and Craftsman Road. Uh, to the south, uh, we have a public hearing tonight based on our proposed use, which is um. Overall, our site is for an automotive development, we're proposing both an auto body repair building and also a service building. Um, so those uses do trigger a special permit um, within the existing M one zone. Um, and so, uh, Tim, could you go to the next slide? Before we get into the site plan, I thought it would be uh, helpful to just give an overview about what Penske does. I, I can admit myself that when I started uh, working for Penske on this application, what I had in my mind was sort of like. You're moving your apartment and you need a moving truck. Um, it's, it's a lot of Jack's laughing at me, but uh, what they do is a lot, a lot more broad than that, they have, they're. One of the leading transportation uh, service providers in North America. They have over four hundred thousand vehicles that are on the roads across the country. Um, and they really have three different product lines that they offer. The first and what's their biggest is their full service leasing, so Penske owns the trucks, but they'll lease the trucks to uh, to Coca-Cola, for example. And so all the trucks are wrapped in Coca-Cola, you wouldn't know they're Penske trucks, uh, but they're part of their full service lea- leasing. Uh, portion of their business, they also have a contract maintenance uh, portion, um, and. Sometimes those trucks are leased um, by Penske or they're owned uh, by the person, and you have a. Contract for maintenance, if you're driving your trucks across the country, you can stop at any Penske location and get service. Uh, fill up your fuel, um, and that's all part of uh, the package, so that's another, um. Another product line, and the final product line is truck rentals. And there obviously are small um, jobs, but also you can think about uh, during times of the year. Times of the year before the holidays, like November to January, they're leasing a bunch of trucks to UPS and they need those extra trucks on the road. Um, so when you see the site plan, you're gonna see obviously room for a lot of truck storage. You're gonna see big drive aisles, uh, different, uh. Large doors for the vehicles to get in and out of the buildings. I thought it'd be helpful to kind of frame. Exactly what Penske is doing is gonna make more sense, I think, when you see the site plan, a little bit different than your typical site plan, but that's because we've got all these sort of moving parts, these different. Trucks that are coming to the site, um. Uh, to, to, for the customers. Uh, could you go to the next, uh, slide, Tim? So on the screen, uh, you're seeing an aerial photo of, uh, the proposed site and the surrounding area. Um, as I mentioned previously, we are a contract purchaser for nineteen point oh six acres. That's the, the right area that I've highlighted in a solid red line. Um, that's gonna be seventy four Craftsman Road to the north, nine crafts, or sorry, seventy four Newberry to the north, nine Craftsman to the south. Um, to the west side of that is the remaining portion of the lot, which is sixty eight Newberry Road. Um, that's owned and operated still by Mr. Dearborn. He has an existing special permit that is on that portion of the site, uh, for his, uh. His business and that's gonna stay there. We're not touching that portion, um, of the site at all. So. The portion of the site that we're buying, uh, is currently farmed, so there's no other use. And we would be taking that portion, um, and constructing our facility on it. We're gonna have, um, two buildings, as I had mentioned previously, one's gonna be closer to Newberry, one's gonna be closer to Craftsman and, um. I did want to mention, you can see sort of on the right side of the screen, Namrick Brook is cutting through that little leg. Of the building. We did, uh, go in September and get a wetlands permit issued by the Wetlands, uh, Commission. Um, and we have a lot of, uh. We have some upland review area disturbance to direct wetland impacts and a lot of mitigation that we're doing because the land's been pretty, um. Disturbed based on all the farming and stuff that's been going on. We have a, a plan that the commission was very happy with. Because we're restoring a lot of what had previously been, um, disturbed on that site. Um, Tim, could you have the next plan? So I just, this is a, uh, a slide that I had Tim put together. On the right side is our proposed, uh, site plan. And just to orient you. Uh, Newberry Road is to the top of the screen. Craftsman is to. The bottom of the screen or to the south. Again, the Penske proposed facility is located to the right side of the screen. What I had Tim do was overlay Mr. Dearborn's latest certification plan for his. His use. Um, and what I was showing with this slide is just that the two uses are gonna be separate. We still have the required separating distance that he's required to have on his side, so we're not encroaching into that buffer at all, um, with our proposed use. So we did do that intentionally so that that permit can sit by itself and ours can.
I will go to question.
As well, that was a question. Okay, so yeah, I thought that might come up and Ruth was kind enough to send me, uh, Mr. Dearborn's latest certification plan, which I think he just submitted to the town at the end of August. So I had Tim. Uh, put them together so that you can notice or that you can see that we're not encroaching into his, um. Into his operation. Could you go to the next slide, please, Tim? Okay, so this is a colored version, uh, of our site plan. Again, Newberry Road is to the north. And, um, Craftsman Road is to the south or to the bottom side of the screen. The auto body repair building is located, uh, to the top of the screen. That's that sort of, uh, gold colored building. Um, off of Craftsman Road, thirty four thousand two hundred and twelve square feet. It's about a twenty eight foot high building and that's where we do the collision repair, um, for those customer, Penske customer only vehicles. So if you're. Leasing with us, you have one of the contracts that was the location, um, that you would go for the auto body repair. The building to the south side, closer to Craftsman Road, that's a service building. That is sixteen thousand seven hundred ninety three square. Foot building. It does have an accessory fuel station, which is located, um, just to the, to the north side, circling that now, but that. Sort of gray square to the, to the top of the building is the, the fuel, the fuel island. Uh, that is something that is, would be for customers who are coming, um. Uh, to the Penske facility. You can't just be driving down the street and go and get gas there. Um, and even if you are a Penske customer, you're not pumping your own gas. There's a pump, Penske employee who's doing that as well. You're coming in there for some other service. And then you're typically, um, getting your clean tapped off before you drive down the road. So, um, it's not gonna be open twenty four hours. It would be open. At the same sort of hours as the employees are there because they would be the ones handling, um, handling the fuel. Before I'm have Tim get into the site plans, I did just want to quickly show you some of the renderings. We had submitted these in the application material, but I just pulled them out. Uh, I did put a little key in the top left side of the screens. You can kind of orient yourself with this. Um, first building is a proposed, uh, body shop. Which is, uh, located, uh, at the Newberry Road. This is if you're driving easterly on Newberry Road. That's kind of the view. The view that you're gonna get at the front of the building. And Tim, if you go to the next slide, this is, uh, uh, a little bit further down Newberry Road. You're looking back and you're a little bit more internal. To the site at this point, because you can't even see the parking for the customers that's out in front, but that gives you, um, a sense of some of the different bays and doors. Um, and the vehicles as they're circulating the site. Tim, can you go to the next slide, please? So this is the proposed service building. This is a front view, um, located down on Craftsman Street, sort of as you're, uh, driving easterly. On Craftsman, that would be the view of the front of that building. And Tim, could you go to the, the last rendering? This is a view. That you really would only see if you were within the site. Um, that's, uh, you're sort of standing within the parking spaces, looking back at the building, but I think you wanted to show this to show. Um, how that fuel island is really tucked behind the building. You're not really gonna have a view of that from the street. You obviously can see it from within the lot, but it is, uh, lower. Than that, uh, that proposed building. Um, and I think with that, that was sort of my, my quick overview. I was gonna have Tim, uh, jump into the site plans. If that works.
Sure.
That's not good? Okay, all right. Okay, excellent. All right, Tim, I'm passing it over to you.
Thank you. Uh, so as Meg mentioned, my name is Tim Hoole. I am a civil engineer with B L Companies. Uh, we are the surveyor. Civil engineer and wetlands consultant of record for this, uh, proposed project. Uh, and I'll kind of start, uh, and do an overview on the existing conditions on the site and then progress through, uh, some of the proposed conditions. Uh, so what we're looking at now is a colored plan of the existing site. We have an aerial image kind of, uh, faded in the background. Uh, the bold orange lines are the property lines as they currently sit today. Uh, with the notable exception that, um, this property line here on the page left is a proposed property line. Uh, we do have this, uh, this property line shown in our. Uh, this proposed property line shown in our plan set, uh, and we do include a, um. A lot line modification plan in the plan set to demonstrate that. Upon a, uh, potential approval, uh, from you all tonight or on subsequent meetings, that we are proposing to merge all of these lots into one and create this side lot line. So. The bold orange is the property line, as I mentioned. Uh, the blue, uh, lines. Over to the plan right, uh, the east side, that is the flowing water courses. The main body over here to this, uh, the bottom right is Namrick Brook. And then the one kind of extending into the site up to the top left is an unnamed tributary. To Namrick Brook that, uh, is picking up water flowing from the north side of Newberry. Under the street through a culvert and then is picked up through, uh, a, another culvert that kind of crosses the northern portion of our site. And discharges to the surface. So, uh, it's that flowing water course that kind of connects into the main body of Namrick Brook. The magenta lines that we show here are the, uh, the delineated wetland boundaries. Uh, that were, uh, delineated, uh, a little more than a year ago and approved by the inland wetlands commission, uh, was approximately a month ago. The yellow lines are the one hundred and fifty foot upland review areas surrounding the wetlands. Um, and I guess a couple of key items to note on this property, as Meg mentioned, um, we do have frontage on two streets. Uh, Newberry Road to the north and Craftsman Road to the south. Both streets have full utilities available within the street, um. And as far as vegetation goes on the lot, it's mostly cleared, uh, and used, uh, as an active farming area. Um, there is some existing tree stand, although it's pretty limited. Kind of up on the northeast corner, um, that's kind of what these squiggly lines are, represents the existing tree line. Um, the bulk of the vegetation really is around the body of Namrick Brook. Um, so. Moving ahead to the proposed conditions, uh, this is the colored site plan that was included in, in the PowerPoint. Um, so I'll, I'll kind of start through this to kind of go through the majority of the site layout. We are proposing two buildings, uh, it's the. Specifically the auto body repair, collision repair building to the north, uh, that's the. Yeah, roughly thirty four thousand square foot building. To the south is the, the service building, which will also be the office for the, uh, the leasing facilities, uh, will, will operate out of that southern building. And immediately behind that building will be the, the fuel station, which, uh, the canopy area is roughly, it's just under two thousand square feet of total area for the canopy. Uh, in all the buildings, the parking, they're all designed in compliance with the, the bulk, uh, zoning regulations, uh, setbacks. We exceed all of them. Uh. By quite a bit for the building setbacks, the parking setbacks are. Uh, they do exceed the zoning requirements, but we are closer to the requirements. Uh, we're roughly. We have about two feet of extra. Uh, buffer for parking in the most extreme case. Uh, drive aisles are. Oversized in many cases, but it's due to the, to the use, um. I'll start kind of on the top and kind of work down the site as we go. Uh, the main entrance on this northern side is, is up here to the northeast corner. We do have one single entrance up here for the collision repair facility. So customers, employees, vehicles getting repaired, they will all enter through this one driveway. Uh, employees and customers will. Immediately turn and enter this parking lot up front. That parking lot is, uh, contains. A ten. Ten foot wide by twenty foot long parking stalls with twenty four foot drive aisles. Uh, the intent is, you know, we want the drive aisles to be a comfortable, but not excessive size for the safety of, uh, vehicles entering and exiting that area. We do want the stalls to be slightly oversized because vehicles, uh, you know, trucks are getting bigger. Every day, so we want those to be easily accessible for, for customers without concern of people opening their door and dinging the car next to them or something, uh, something along those lines. Uh, moving forward into the site. Trucks that come in specifically for repair. Will enter through the driveway. There is a sliding gate here that will, um. Uh. There, there's a fence system all the way around the property for security, uh, during after hours. Those gates will be closed, but we do have, uh, a thirty foot wide gate opening. It's located. It's a little hard to see, but it's kind of located. Right in this area. It's the main access into, uh, into the, the yard and. Trucks will come in. And. They will either enter the repair building for immediate repairs, or they will be parked in one of the inventory storage spaces through the lot. Where, you know, they'll enter the queue, uh, into the system for, for repairs, um. The drive aisles that we have inside the site are sized specifically for trucks and. The truck sizes do vary from, uh, from a conventional box truck, uh, all the way up to a full size tractor trailer. So. Uh, we do have some pretty large drive aisles around the building, but it's. It, it's approximately ninety feet and that's designed to allow a tractor trailer with the truck and trailer attached. To be able to maneuver square up to the building and be able to pull the truck and trailer into the building for any needed repairs. And similarly, they would be able to back out of the building. Uh. To exit. Without impacting any of the inventory storage spaces on either side of the building. Moving through the site, um, we do have, uh, circulation aisle around the backside of the building. Uh, we have the first set of dumpsters specifically for the collision repair facen- uh, facility here located on this, uh, southwest corner of the building. Uh, with plenty of access for the, the. Uh, refuse pickup. Moving through the center portion of the site, this is kind of the heart of the inventory storage area. If you'll note, these are all, uh, these stalls are all approximately, uh, twelve feet wide by thirty feet long. The intent here is that the, the fleet is primarily. Going to consist of box trucks. Uh, so that, that's really what we've. Catered the majority of the site to. On this eastern side, we do have, uh, two, uh, I call them double stack parking here. These are two. Thirty foot deep stalls nose to tail. But we also have a concrete pad located down the, down the front edge of. The outermost stall. The intent there is this provides Penske with some flexibility in the event they do have a tractor trailer and the trailer needs to be dropped. They can take. To what would be two box trucks out and park a single trailer here and drop the trailer. Uh, and similarly to enable that flexibility to maneuver the trailer in and out. This drive aisle through the center on this side is wider. This is a ninety foot drive aisle to allow the, the tractor trailer to maneuver and back a, a trailer in and out. Without impacting any of the surrounding parking stalls. The drive aisle on the side that is intended for box trucks only is fifty feet. Um, you know, we, we were able to tighten that up to, to the minimum required for a box truck to safely pull in and out of those stalls without impacting the adjacent vehicles. Progressing down to the southern side of the site. Um, we have, I'll start kind of on the southeast corner here. Uh, we have some additional inventory storage extending down to the south. Uh, this is intended for box trucks only, so it's the, uh, the twelve by thirty stalls down here with a fifty foot center drive aisle. Uh, moving west from there, we have, uh, some employee only parking. Uh, these are all ten by twenty parking stalls with a twenty four foot drive aisle down the center. Uh, a, again, intended for employees only. We do have a sidewalk to provide access for the employees from that parking lot up to the building. Progressing farther west, we kind of have the main pad around the building now. Uh, there is. Truck storage on either side of the building. Uh, again, we have ninety foot wide drive aisles around. The service building on, on the pa- uh, plan left and plan right sides. This is again intended for a truck and trailer to maneuver in and out of this building. Uh, for repairs. Around the rear, we, we do have the fuel, um, the fuel station here. Where trucks. Coming in for fueling will kind of come up this, uh, this right drive aisle. They'll take a left-hand turn, access the fuel island. And then they'll continue out to the left and then, uh, take a left turn and out the. The plan left out the western driveway. Vehicles that can bypass the fuel island. They do have approximately forty five feet of room between the fuel canopy. And the, the rear curb line here to, to. Make their turning movement around the back of the service building and circulate either to the inventory on the left side or out the site. The dumpster enclosure for the service building is located just to the north of the service building. Again, there's plenty of. Space here for the trash trucks to come and, and pick up the refuse. Moving forward, we also have, you know, the fence continues around this site. Uh, again, it's a thirty foot wide gate opening. This I, this building has two gate openings, uh, in the area circled in red. And then in front of the building, we do have, uh, customer and employee parking kind of, um, in a rough C shape around the, the immediate front wall of the building. And then we do have some truck parking outside of the fenced in area. The intention here is, uh, if a customer is renting a vehicle. Um, the rental ready. Area is out front facing the street. That's the area where, you know, if you've. Secured your rental online, you're coming to pick it up. The truck should, uh, should be ready out front for a nice, easy and convenient pickup. If you are returning your vehicle after hours, we do have four parking stalls located outside of the, the secure area where you can pull into the site. Park the vehicle here immediately adjacent to the entrance, drive aisle, and then go up and, and drop the keys inside the building to, uh. To return the rental. And then there, there are four or five additional stalls over here on the uh, the plan left. Uh, as a little bit of an overflow for either one um, uh, on some of the busier days. Uh, as I mentioned, we do have a perimeter fence around, um. The, the fence is six foot high black vinyl coated chain link fence. We did receive uh, some comments in the staff memo requesting some additional screening um, uh, for these fences. So what we are proposing is to add some privacy slats on the areas facing the street. That um, we, we cannot screen via landscaping measures. Um, I'm gonna skip over to some black and white plans to help demonstrate some of these uh, some of these concerns here. This is our overall site plan, so it's pretty much the same look that we were at before. The areas highlighted in yellow and green are specifically the, the screening comments that I'd like to discuss. The areas in yellow are ones we would propose to add the privacy slats to. These are areas that we um. Would be much more challenging to screen with landscaping, either because it's in the middle of a paved area. Or in this case, up here in the top corner, that's where the transformer location is. And we can't have vegetation there for uh, for safety reasons. Areas highlighted in green are locations that we would propose to provide screening uh, in the form of Arbivites to help. Uh, buffer that uh, the storage area from visibility from the street. So we do have these locations up here on the north, um, there are also a couple of locations down here on the south. The areas immediately surrounding the building would be the ones with privacy slats. The areas over here to the uh, to the east that screen the employee parking and the inventory storage that are set back from the street. Uh, those we would propose some Arbivite screening for uh, to help kind of buffer that view from the street. And one of the other comments we did receive was in regards to snow storage. We do have quite a bit of space through the site for uh, smaller storm events. There is approximately, the, the scale is a little misleading on this. These uh, areas highlighted in the, the light blue color are the proposed snow storage areas. And the space between our curb lines around the perimeter and the fence. It, it looks a little misleading because we are at a large scale, but there's approximately thirteen feet of space between the curb and the fence. So if we get a, you know, one or two or three inch snowstorm, there is capacity there to push some of the smaller snow piles in those areas. We do want to maintain some clear uh, clear space. Out some, behind those curb lines for the truck to overhang the curb a little bit and for. Uh, for Penske staff to perform a safety inspection around the vehicle before uh, either driving it into a repair building or out of the site. But there still is enough room there for, for some smaller snow storage. And similarly, down some of these interior islands, we do have a little bit of capacity for some of those smaller events. In larger storms, uh, this southern inventory storage area would be used for snow storage. We did do a parking analysis here and the required parking is, is pretty light. Um, we came up with a requirement for uh, the zoning requirement specifically lists six spaces. Plus one per repair bay, which is somewhere around twenty one, twenty two parking stalls required for the site as a whole. Um, based on the, the operations of Penske, that is much lighter than what would be functional here. We're in the neighborhood of eighty six passenger car spaces and three hundred nineteen truck spaces. Um, so certainly when we are talking about snow storage, uh, Penske does have the flexibility. Especially in the winter months when they are seeing a lot more of the, the rental activity for the holiday rush. Um, they can remove trucks from the site to have additional snow storage in the southern corner. Uh, it won't impact any of the required parking for zoning. And it does give them a place to push snow for storage. And um, it can be either short term or long term, it can be stored there short term and hauled off site to a disposal facility. Or it can stay onsite and melt and then the runoff goes into the stormwater management system. Um, as far as traffic concerns go, uh, Penske is a fairly unique operation. In that there is really no clear guidance from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Most of the comparison that ITE has is for more of a high volume rental facility. Um, similar to like a car rental, something like a Hertz or something like that. So, uh, really luckily, we do work with Penske quite a bit, so we have a lot of comparison facilities to draw our information off of. And based on the comparison facilities, uh, we see a maximum. Uh, the, the peak traffic is typically the, the evening peak on a weekday, which is in the neighborhood of sixty five trips in an hour. Um, so. On average, one per minute, and that is through the entire site, including the auto body repair, the service building, the leasing. Uh, operations and the fuel station. So, in all, it's, it's a fairly low traffic impact for a development of this size. And for uh, for the amount of parking stalls that we see on the site as a whole. Uh, we did submit a full traffic study that is included in the application. Uh, and if there are additional traffic comments, uh, I can uh, have Mike Kirker from our transportation group. He is here with us and he can uh, answer any questions that come up for traffic. For utilities, uh, we do have a fairly comprehensive utility plan. Essentially, the way the utilities are set up is each building is self sufficient. Both buildings have a two inch type K copper domestic water service coming in from the street. Uh, we have coordinated with Connecticut Water to confirm they do have adequate supply in the uh, in the network in this area for the domestic needs. For fire suppression, we have an eight inch uh, ductile iron line coming in from the main. Uh, Connecticut Water does require separate domestic from fire services here, so we do have those. We will have a six inch line going into the building. And the eight inch will continue through the site to serve two fire hydrants around each building. Um, one is located up here in the north, uh, I'll circle that so it stands out a little better. Up in the north corner, uh, we have one on the northern end of the central island. There's one on the southern end of the central island, and then the last hydrant is located down um, on the, the southeastern corner of the service building. Uh, these are located with the spacing to be in compliance with NFPA recommendations. And also to be in highly accessible and highly visible locations for the fire department. For sanitary sewer, we have a six inch PVC service for each building. Uh, we did submit to uh, WPCA for a capacity request. And we do, uh, we did include those letters from them verifying there is adequate capacity in the application booklet. As part of the sanitary sewer service, we do have oil water separators, one for each building. To uh, collect and provide that pre-treatment necessary from all of the floor drains inside of the building. Prior to discharge to the municipal system. We are proposing a natural gas service for each building to power the HVAC equipment. The natural gas is underground in each street, so we do have those services coming in. And for electric and telecommunications, uh, those are coming in from the public right of way as well. For the body shop up on Newberry Road, uh, we are connecting to a utility pole on the far side of the street. Uh, it's coming down the pole and then we're going underground, under the street and into the site. So there will be no overhead lines crossing the road and traveling into the site, it will be a completely underground service. The transformer location is, as I showed before, it is up in this uh, northeast corner outside, just outside of the gate location. Uh, and all the electric and telecommunications will run into uh, the building from there. For the uh, the service building on Craftsman Road. The electric and telecommunications are all underground on the near side of the street, so we're running underground. The transformer is located uh, out near the uh, the rental return area. And the services will continue underground into the building from there. For stormwater management, uh, we do have a, a pretty comprehensive stormwater management design here. Uh, we had a full geotechnical analysis performed on this site. It was included in the stormwater report that was submitted with the uh, the application. And it really identified that the majority of the soils on this site are not suitable for infiltration. We did find two locations that have decent soils for infiltration, and that's where we located our infiltration measures. As a whole, all of the stormwater runoff from the developed areas, they're collected in deep sump and hooded catch basins. Uh. The, all that paving runoff will then be piped through the stormwater system. And be treated in hydrodynamic separators that are sized to provide uh, the eighty percent. TSS removal treatment that is required prior to infiltration. And then all of those uh, paved areas uh, and, and the discharge from those treatment units will go into. One of two subsurface infiltration systems. These systems are designed as precast concrete units. Um, uh, it gives us a little bit more flexibility to have slightly taller chambers and minimize our footprint. While also taking into account the potential for some heavy truck loading here on the site. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, these two systems are located in the areas that received the, the best infiltration rates that we found on site. To really minimize the footprint, um, and take advantage of some of the, the better soils we had on site. We do have one location on the site, uh, down here in the southeastern driveway. Where stormwater is collected in a catch basin, it is treated immediately in a hydrodynamic separator. And then direct discharged into uh, into a wetland resource area along the front. Uh, this was done to try to balance the, the timing of our stormwater discharges. Uh, the majority of our site does get collected and uh, go through the infiltration systems. And overflowing in large storm events will flow out. An outlet pipe towards Namrick Brook on the east of the site. Uh, that was done to balance the direction of flows. Um, however, if we took all of the stormwater runoff from the site and sent it to Namrick Brook. That would result in a quite a substantial reduction in flow to this uh, this small southwestern wetland that we have. Um, a- and we really didn't want to uh, to have a reduction. We try to have a slight reduction in discharge rates and volumes to the wetland resource areas. But we don't want to reduce it too much because we want to maintain that runoff, that stormwater flow into the wetland resource areas. So that they keep that water coming in and maintain the wetland viability and the habitat viability. And so specific to the southern one, um, we did maintain a small direct discharge uh, that is treated. To balance those peak rates. Uh, all of the stormwater from the roof areas are collected in uh, in, in downspouts. And are piped underground and sent directly into the infiltration systems as the roof runoff is uh, is, is clean water. Uh, as a whole, the stormwater system does present a net decrease in total flow. We have a few key design points, uh, one being the flow to the east towards Namrick Brook. Uh, we do have a, a decrease in peak flow rates to the east. Um, we also have a net decrease in peak flow crossing uh, under the culvert, under Craftsman Road to the south. We also analyzed uh, the net flow to Namrick Brook south of the site. Because uh, this culvert crossing under Craftsman does ultimately discharge to Namrick Brook. And that design point south of the site. At the confluence of the, the culvert discharge and Namrick Brook is also a net decrease. There is a very slight increase in discharge rates just from the uh, two each street. Just due to the driveway constraints on the immediate driveway apron areas, although those increases are, they're, they're less than one cubic feet per second. So uh, pretty insignificant in uh, in the grand scheme of the drainage infrastructure onsite. Um, in terms of wetlands impacts, um, we did receive approval from the uh, inland wetlands commission. As a whole, I'm not gonna go too far into the wetlands, but I did just want to share, we do, uh, as Meg mentioned, there is quite a bit of uh, historical impacts. On the site to wetlands. We are having some very minor direct impacts, we're less than five thousand square feet of direct wetlands impacts. Uh, from our proposed development as the wetlands currently sit today. Um, so we do have some mitigation areas proposed for those direct impacts. However, we did also uh, work with the local commission and the Army Corps of Engineers. In regards to some of the historic impacts, and we are proposing uh, quite a bit of mitigation for some of the historical impacts. Um, I'm actually gonna go back to the colored plan, I think this depicts it the best. The areas um, in the uh, like olive green color. These are our uh, wetland mitigation areas. Um, we are proposing it's substantially all along the, the eastern side. The Army Corps uh, really emphasized, they would like to see the mitigation along the, the wetlands and main body of Namrick Brook. Uh, and that immediate tributary feeding in from the site. Um, so that's where, that is where we focused our efforts on the mitigation. And we're somewhere in uh, approximately one acre of total wetland mitigation area onsite. So it's, it's well in excess of the uh, the five thousand square feet of direct impacts we have from our proposed project. The mitigation plantings themselves consist of a mix of uh, trees and shrubs specifically picked to uh, to foster habitat. Uh, development for this region, whether it be in the form of shelter or uh, or food sources for some of the. Uh, the native species in this area. And then we supplemented that with a, a wetland seed mix that does contain additional uh, mixes of wildflowers. Uh, some shrubs in there and will certainly uh, be allowed to revegetate and will uh, in turn. Uh, help improve the wetland resource area through time. Uh, we do also have a full site lighting uh, system throughout the site. Um, these are shown on the plan. We do have through the center, we have some uh, some poles down the center island and then uh, around the perimeter of the site. Everything around the perimeter of the site is uh, is shielded to direct the light into the site and, and minimize any. Any spillage. Um, the fixtures are full cutoff, dark sky compliant, uh, LED energy efficient fixtures. The, the target light levels inside the site are a minimum one foot candle for site security. Um, and certainly as you get like into the heart of the site, there are some, some hotspots, but as a whole, uh, the lighting levels, we really try to minimize those. Um, a- and just, we try to keep it somewhere in the neighborhood of like the one to five foot candle average uh, for security. We don't want any super bright areas. Um, I'll progress to landscaping, I believe that is. The next item of concern. Um, we really tried to focus our attention on landscaping, really on the, the perimeter trees. And minimizing the urban heat island effect of this site, given the, the, the large mass of impervious surfaces that we have. Um. We do comply with the perimeter tree requirement for one tree per fifty feet of, of perimeter of the site. Um, you know, you can see those kind of uh, throughout the, the boundary of the site. We did also add some interior trees uh, along the, the islands through this kind of central and southern portion of the site. So, uh, and these trees were selected as uh, tree species that are native to the region. And also are. Uh are native to the region and also are. Are suitable for development of this nature a- and will will do well. Given the amount of um impervious surfaces that they are around, they're not a species that's going to put out a massive root system and crack the paving or. Are going to really suffer uh due to some of the the heat effects that come up. Um but we did try to provide species that do get a little bit uh larger and provide some of that uh shade to minimize the heat island effect. Similarly, uh we do have a zoning requirement for a uh a buffer yard up in this northeast corner, there is a uh. A single family residence up here in this northeast corner that is currently operating uh as a residence, but also as a a landscape business. We did request in our application that the commission. Approve a reduction in this buffer yard from the standard one hundred foot requirement. Down to the the fifty feet allowed in the zoning regulations at the commission's discretion. Uh what we show here, this dashed uh and hatched area is the fifty foot. Buffer area around the residential property. We are in this area maintaining. Uh as much of the existing vegetation as possible, it really is the vast majority of it, most of that is because um. It's in a wetland resource area, there is a good mix of mature vegetation in there, so both for the screening purposes and for. Uh maintaining the the wetland resource area, we really made it an emphasis to. To keep as much of that existing tree stand as possible. And then we provided supplemental plantings of evergreens, uh and you can see that as that's these uh small kind of black. Symbols here, um we supplemented with evergreens. To fill in overtime and provide that visual screen to that uh the residents and landscaping business. Uh I would like to add that uh specific to minimizing our footprint, we did uh take as much. We we tried to push our our site development as far in as we could, um we do have a proposed retaining wall here, that's um. I'll highlight this in green so you can see. This retaining wall was designed to really keep us both out of the wetland area. And also maximize the amount of vegetation, the existing vegetation that we can save, because if you can see here. Um in red is the existing vegetation line. So we really wanted to maintain this kind of bulge in the existing vegetation. We wanted to keep as much of that intact as possible and really we should be able to keep just about all of that. To provide as much of a buffer to the residents and landscape business as possible. Um and I would like to add, as far as screening goes, on this uh this western side. Of the fence line, we are proposing privacy slats. Down to um down to the edge of this this buffer zone area that we are required to have, so. Um I'm just going to clear some of these highlights so I can demonstrate the area I'm speaking about here. The privacy slats in conjunction with um. The requested screenings in the staff memo, the privacy slats would extend down to approximately. This area highlighted in yellow uh to help. Offset, you know, we have some of that vegetative screening, but the privacy slats will also. Help screen some of the the truck parking uh inside the site from. Sightline from the residents and landscape business. Um and lastly, I'll just briefly touch upon uh signage. So I'm actually going to jump back to the colored plan. We do show on the site plans um. A couple sign locations here, um there is one monument sign located at uh. At Newberry Road just west of the driveway, that's um. Right, it's a small little rectangle right up here in the top corner. Uh and then there's similarly, there is another monument sign located just east of. The uh the eastern driveway for the service building. Uh those are the two proposed monument sign locations, and then we do have some uh requested building signage as well. The signage information was included in the plan set uh in one of the detail sheets. Uh however, we did note uh in the staff memo uh that the. Planning department staff recommended a separate sign application permit be filed. And that one of the monument signs was uh larger than zoning allows, um so that's, we acknowledge those comments, we will. Uh revise the sign and we will submit a sign application for the the proposed sign package for the site. Um so with that, uh I'm going to hand it back to Meg for um for. Closing statement.
And um I know we have, we've been referencing the uh staff memo that um Ruth had provided to us on October thirteenth. We did uh provide a response and I did print, I emailed it to Mike earlier, I did print out copies, do you want me to go through that? Okay, perfect, so I'll, this will hopefully address some of those, I know some we've talked about already, but I'll just um. I'll wait for Mike to pass that out and I'll start going through them. So the first uh the first staff comment, number one, uh which Tim already touched on, had to indicated that a separate sign permit application will be required for the. Proposed signage, we acknowledge that um. Currently uh our monument signs are greater than a thirty-two square foot maximum, which is required by code and what we've indicated in this response is that. Uh when we file that sign, we'll uh make sure that all the signs meet the requirements of the sign regulation. Um item number two, um asked about um the colors for the roof. So the auto body repair building has a white EPDM rubber roof membrane. While the proposed service building has a standing seam metal roof in a galvanized color, so like a light silver um. Uh that obviously will help cool runoff um before it enters into our underground. Storm system, I did want want to also note for the record that Penske does build their buildings uh for lead certification. Uh so that's just sort of a company policy, which is always a bonus, but I didn't want to put that into the record. Comment number three uh asked if there were any vehicles dedicated for onsite use, if so. They should incorporate a white noise backup alarm, we do not have any vehicles that are dedicated for onsite use. Um comment number four um asked about the fueling island uh and whether it had twenty-four hour access, I already had already talked about this, but. Um again, the fueling island is sort of an accessory component of that service building. Um only a Penske employee would be able to actually um fill up gas for a customer and it would not be open twenty-four hours. Um it would be open when that service building um is open uh to the customers. Um sec- uh comment number five had to do with um a section of your zoning regulation six oh one point three H. Which requires a ten foot separating distance um between the building um and parking. So we had some areas within the site plan where we we weren't quite meeting that requirement. Um and we have found a way to um come into compliance with that. Um and I'm going to have Tim show you quickly how he's going to do that. Um but essentially, if you remember, Tim had mentioned how we had some of these oversized parking stalls, so. Um what we're doing in certain areas is we're taking those uh twenty foot long parking stalls and we're making them eighteen feet because I could see the two feet I need. For the sidewalk, um and then we're shifting the building in another area, so I'll have Tim um just go over that quickly, but it the. Sort of punchline is is we can come into compliance with that section of the regulation. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, uh so up here on the north at the uh auto body repair facility. Uh what we are proposing to do to bring this into compliance with the regulation is to. Pull this auto body repair building back two feet, uh that will allow us to widen the front sidewalk to ten feet. To meet the requirement, um and we are also proposing to add a ten foot striped area. At the back of the building. Uh to provide a uh a separation for the circulating traffic. Uh all told, this will still provide uh an oversized drive aisle in the back for uh for tractor trailers to be able to drive through. Um you know, we'll still have somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five feet of a drive aisle for circulation. Uh but again, that will bring us into compliance with the the ten foot required separation between parking and building up here on the front side. Moving down to the the service building, um this is the area where we are proposing uh to reduce the front parking. Uh it's currently ten foot by twenty foot, we are proposing to reduce it to ten foot wide by eighteen feet long and. That extra two feet will go to the front sidewalk, so. That will allow us to get up to a ten foot wide sidewalk and meet the regulation for uh for the service building.
Thanks, Tim. Um comment number six uh asked us to discuss snow clearing and storage, which we've we've already done. And Tim, if you, can you email Mike um that color plan with the snow storage area uh just so he can have that in the record?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um because Tim just worked on that today, so I'll have him email that to you, Mike. Um regarding comment seven, that had to do with um some additional screening beyond just the fence. Um in those areas that were parallel to the road, um Tim already mentioned that in the areas where. We have the gate where we can't do any more landscaping, we're going to do the slats, and then in those areas where we have existing lawn or. Uh trees that we had proposed, we're going to supplement um in those areas outside the fence. Um with some evergreen from Arbor Vitae's, um so we addressed that comment. As well previously, comment number eight asks about the EV chargers. Uh we did have those on the plan, they're they're not shown on the site plan sheet, they're on the site utility plan sheet. Um so I think they they were always on the plans, but they're just on the SU one and SU two plans. We have two EV chargers um in the northeast corner of the body shop, two EV chargers in the southwest corner of the service building. And then we're also putting in the infrastructure, the conduit um to run from the service building to that employee parking lot as well, so we can add future. On charging locations um for employees, so that's that can be found on the the site utility plan sheet. Uh comment number nine asks the construction will be conducted in phases. Um our plan currently is to do all the site site work and stabilize the site. Um we, after all that is completed, the the body shop would be constructed first and then the service. Uh building would be constructed last, but because we have the wetlands permit, um because of the soils and stuff onsite, we we think we're probably just going to do this whole. Site work at one time, have everything stabilized, um but the building, the service building might lag a little bit behind, we're probably getting the whole ser- whole body shop. Building up first, uh we we can, it it is possible for us to phase it and if. Staff wanted us to include a phasing plan in the plans that we could, I think at this time, that's our our present intention with construction. Uh there was a question about excess fill, um. One of the uh interesting things that we found when we did all site analysis and the geotechnical report is because of all the farming we've got in some. Areas on the site twelve to eighteen inches of topsoil, um which essentially often be removed before we can do all the site work, so there is uh quite a bit of. Of material that needs to leave the site, I think it's thirty-two thousand cubic yards, Tim? About.
Uh it's about twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand, I know he has a chart on there, so um it is going to be the contractor's responsibility to to move that soil. Uh we are aware after speaking with staff that um the town has a sp- specific provision that if you're moving more than a hundred cubic yards, you need a permit, so we're going to put that note. Into the plan set, um a sort of like a balance offenders approach to hopefully. Reminds somebody that if they're moving it somewhere, it needs to come to you guys. So um we'll put it in there for the contractors, um covers us and that will cover them them as well, um in case they're going to move that. Uh into typically when you do have topsoil, people want it, which is good, um so we're hoping that it'll move pretty quickly um off the site. Comment number eleven, uh we acknowledge that there'll be a pre-construction inspection of the ENS controls or the staff, we talked quite a bit with the Wetlands Commission about these types of stuff. We um we acknowledge that. Um there was a question about whether an administrative decision from OSA would be required, so. Mike uh Kirkor who's on on the call, uh because we're traffic engineer, did the traffic analysis, did reach out to OSA. Uh regarding our proposed use and whether it would be considered a major traffic generator, typ- typically that threshold is two hundred parking spaces, we obviously. Have more than that number of parking spaces, but we only have eighty-six customer and employee parking spaces and then we have the rest truck spaces. Um what Joe uh Wlett, the executive director of OSA said was that parking spaces used for inventory or rentals, those should not be caught. Counted for that MTG uh threshold analysis, so they they told us that because we only have these eighty-six company employee parking. We don't need their jurisdictional jurisdictional level to go for it, so we don't need to get any administrative decision from them.
And that gave him who?
That came from Joe. Wlett, how do you, is that how you say it, Mike? Yeah, executive director. So that's what, that's what he said, um and. I it seems a little counterintuitive, but I I told him to go ask him again and that's what he said again, so um. We have checked with them on that, I guess it's similar in speaking with Tim who's representing car dealerships, it's similar with them as well. Uh where you have obviously tons of cars, but they're not counting that um for the the threshold requirement. Um general comments, um we obviously, as we've mentioned, we had the uh the wetlands public hearing and we received approval on the six. Um the town engineers reviewed our plan set, um he's satisfied with our plans, the fire marshal reviewed our plans, has no issues. Um the building official signed off on the plans, uh we did receive a letter from the WPCA superintendent. Confirming adequate capacity for our proposed uh sewer and um I believe Mike spoke with the um. Legal traffic authority today and said he didn't have any comments. Um on the plan. So that's all I had for my presentation, I'm happy to open up to any questions from.
Number one, thank you for considering this winter.
Yeah.
Number one, um. I'm sure I hope commissioners have plenty of questions. Yeah, I'm starting at this end of the table, I'll let the end go first.
Well, I'll start by saying, um glad you consider are considering these Windsor and um. We're happy to see an industrial use in our industrial zone, so. It's totally what we were looking for and are looking for, um. Couple of questions. You've answered most of the questions, I think, that were put forward by the town staff. Um I can't tell, based on the number of parking spaces and the state law, if you've got enough electrical. Vehicle chargers.
Yeah, they, so it would be based upon, yeah, the uh. Parking lot that's down here, so it's it's only the employee and customer spaces that would.
But I forget what the number is that's required by statute and this is. There are two spaces they're giving, there's.
We have four, four, we have two, two at each building, and I believe we have eighty-six customer spaces, Tim?
Yes, we have eighty-six spaces, so what what we're proposing, I'll actually go to the utilities plan so I can show a little bit closer in. Where these are located.
I prefer to make sure your count meets this eight rules.
Sure, um so we do have, uh it's located right here, this is the EV charging station. Um and it's located such that it can serve these two parking stalls right here, um so we have two located up here. Um moving down to the southern side of the site, we have, um I apologize as this loads. We have, um. There's another one located here and another one located here, so we can get three more spaces here. Uh that's these three and then we have provisions, uh those will be installed from day one. And then we have provisions to extend uh electric, we're putting in conduit and installing a handhole here for provisions to be able to add. Uh a substantial amount down in this employee parking lot, um really with the extension of the electric conduit down here, we can add. Certainly for uh stalls of EV charging, we could potentially even add up in the neighborhood of ten total down in this area. Um so with that, you know, we recognize the the state statute uh does not clarify whether they are to be installed from day one. The the language uh states that the infrastructure is to be installed. Uh so with that, you know, we're providing the conduit for means of additional measures. To get to whatever the future needs are down in this area, if it's four stalls, six stalls, eight. Whatever the future needs are down in this area, if it's four stalls, six stalls, eight stalls, we have that means of getting power here. And extending it as needed to provide those chargers.
And the conduit is big enough to take the electrical demand.
Yes, yes, this conduit is sized to provide the the necessary capacity to add. To add one feed or two feeds as necessary to each of these. Each of these locations.
Okay.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yeah.
So our regs, we have regs which align with the public act, so you'll need to demonstrate that you have infrastructure capable of supporting. Ten percent of the parking area for employee customer. So you don't need to have the chargers, but you need to be able to accommodate ten percent of the spaces. One of the things that we've run into is that particularly for the chargers that will be installed. You may find that upon building department review, that those chargers need to be able to facilitate access from the handicap space. If it's the unless there's a separate one being provided, you may find need to relocate that, it's got nothing to do with us. But as you're tweaking that plan, your ADA spaces are on that that front portion of the building. And I think that the way that it's come up previously is that we may have to make that available for them. One, you provide the chargers. But for us, it's just the capability of support on ten percent.
And I think for the record, we can support ten percent, which would be eight, six or nine parking spaces.
You asked a question about the roofs and them being light colored and you indicated they were light colored. I'm wondering if you considered solar as a possibility on your route down.
John? I could answer that, we have considered solar, it's still on the table, we haven't decided if we're going to do it, if it's going to be. Economically feasible with the ROI. But we have considered it, yes.
And then my last question is a curiosity question. When they are leased trucks, do you register them at your site? Or like if you're renting them to UPS for the Christmas season, do they get registered to UPS? And the reason I'm asking is who gets the tax?
That's a good, that's a good question, operationally, I'm not exactly sure how they the tax incentives go. If it's a leased truck, we own the.
Connecticut is strange in that we have property tax on vehicles. So wherever they are registered. Is.
Right, and I I I, yeah, I'm not sure, I don't know operationally. I know we've registered trucks in Indiana, we register in Maine, I think that's a national thing where those are.
Yeah.
States register, I don't know how it works for Connecticut. It's not my part, I I build buildings, I don't, I don't have that, but.
You can be sure of that.
But to answer some of your question, when when, like, if UPS leases a truck, we own the truck, right? If they need a truck for Thanksgiving through Christmas to do extra deliveries, we rent the truck to them. So we we still own both those trucks.
I leased an electric vehicle and. Because I leased it, I paid the property taxes to East Twenty. So I I I don't know how it works, that was a curiosity question, not a.
We will be paying real property tax.
Is that all in?
My last question was, as you think about your truck fleet. I believe Connecticut has signed on to the California Vehicle Program. Which means in time trucks get electrified. Are you prepared for electric trucks at some point in the future? Will your building be able to handle that?
Never going to get an answer.
We we are the first company in North America to provide. Leased electric trucks, so yes, we are, we are leading the market in it, yes.
Yep, so you were ready.
We're ready for it.
Excellent.
We're ready.
Are you good, Ann?
I'm good.
Dave?
Wow, I think that was a really complete package submitted.
Very good job.
My only question, did I have the same question? It may have been addressed and I may have missed it in the turning plants, but I noticed on the west side of the. Service building. If you happen to have all the parking spaces filled with vehicles, did you still have enough room to turn around emergency service fire trucks? And tractor trailers?
Yeah, so Tim, so you're saying if the west side is.
If the west side is full with inventory, as it's an inventory location, so you have to lay on every one of those spaces available. If we have an emergency service fire truck, ladder truck rolling there for protection. Or you have a stray new truck driver.
Yes.
That doesn't see the sign and gets himself in there. Is there enough room for him to turn, because there is no three hundred and sixty degree access around that building? How does he get out?
Can you adjust that, Tim?
Sure, so I'll I'll kind of address both buildings, because I know, you know, each building is a little unique here. Specific to the service building here on the south side of the site, we do have full three hundred and sixty access around the building. And there are two driveways.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So, okay, so this one has full three sixty access, two driveways, so they can enter and exit from either one and through either gate. So this one should be a pretty simple one.
Yeah, go to the other one.
I apologize, that was not the building I meant, that was the north one. Yes, the building, yes.
Yes, so up here, we do have, like you mentioned, it is a dead end drive up here. But I'll I'm going to jump to the site plan so we can see the dimensions up here a little better. These areas are oversized, it is ninety feet clear up here. So there is space for a vehicle to to pull up, you know, either close to the building or close to the parking. And kind of, you know, make a a U-turn. Certainly, you know, if we're talking a larger vehicle like a ladder truck, it might be more of like a three-point turn where they pull up nose to the building. Back up and then move around. But a smaller vehicle like an engine or an ambulance, anything like that should be able to make that that turn. In those instances, they're much, they're they're very akin to a box truck that we have for Penske. And those are able to make those kind of U-turns in this area.
My concern is more ladder trucks, that type of, we have the fire in there, we we send all the ladder trucks in.
Right.
Yep.
How do they get out?
That that night, we we do across all our locations.
Okay, so it's a twenty foot buffer off the building and then another seventy feet with thirty, so that gives you.
Yeah.
Yep.
And.
And ideally.
When you ran that template, Tim, wasn't it a WB, was it sixty seven?
Yes, so the template shown on this turning movement plan is a WB sixty seven demonstrating, you know, they have the ability to pull in and access each parking area.
Don't forget you have a building two feet forward too.
Two feet to the south, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
And I I I would like to add, ideally, we would want full access around that, the auto body repair building. Just for what you were talking about, but because the grading up in that northwest corner. We couldn't get that second access in without going over our our percentage of slope. That we we won't go over a five percent slope at any entrance, just because when you get snow in a truck on a slope. It's it's a negative, right? So we just couldn't meet that that need, so that's why we we don't have full access around the building.
Okay. That answers that.
But I do know that the fire fire looked at this and had any issues.
And I'm sure they did, I'm sure, I just.
Yeah, I I I had Tim do many, many layouts to try to get that to access and it just didn't work.
Yeah, Frank, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good, that was my.
I got lots of questions.
Okay.
Uh, number one, hours of operation that never got mentioned.
John, can you talk to that?
Twenty four seven.
Okay.
What was it?
Will be twenty four seven.
Twenty four.
You said the fueling station wasn't twenty four seven.
Fueling station won't be twenty four seven, it it'll typically be. By six AM till at the latest eleven PM, the two shift, we we don't fuel on a third shift.
John, can you talk a little bit about what the shifts look like and like when when it's the busiest and when it slows down a little bit?
Yeah, three shifts, so think about, think about what Penske does. We 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 put trucks on the road so you can deliver product, right? So a lot of times we run two and three shifts because our customers run their trucks during the day. They're six AM to six PM. They drop their truck off at six PM, they want to pick it up the next day because a sitting truck doesn't make money. So we have techs that work second and third shifts, so we can provide those trucks to them back the next morning without them losing any downtime. So that's that's one of the big reasons why we run that twenty four seven ship, the shifts. Do we have it fully staffed? Typically not, it'll be a lighter staff on the, especially the third shift, second shift's even a little more lighter. When we talked about traffic coming in and out, our highest rate is about sixty five in an hour. That's typically right at our shift change for that first and second shift, that's where you'll see it's mostly auto. We don't, we're not a truck term, we don't have a lot of trucks coming in and out. The service would have more than the body shop, the body shop is, you know, a truck comes in, gets worked on the body shop. That truck might be in that shop three to four days. So we're not constantly turning trucks over in that body shop where the service we will turn them over because. Service shop, we're doing more, it's more light, light maintenance, we're doing. PMs, you know, oil changes, radiator change, transmissions, we're not doing heavy engine where those trucks are sitting in the shop. Two, three, four, five, six days, so we're we're turning those trucks more often than not. And the trucks that do stay one or two days in our service shop. We have, and to answer some of the parking questions, we have extra parking, so we have trucks that are sitting there waiting. For customers when their truck is going to be down a few days, we can give them a truck to to keep moving their products so they don't lose any time in their business. Hopefully that answers your question in a roundabout way.
Okay, also two. Roof scraping for the tops of the trucks, thinking Connecticut is the law, you have to have. I didn't see any location for that on the plan anywhere.
By law?
Or no, isn't?
Yeah, it is.
By Connecticut law, we need snow scrapers?
Well, for the top of the trucks.
You mean that it needs to, you need to clear the roof before it leaves the site?
Is that for truck terminals, you're all trucking? I I I'm honestly, I'd never heard that before, I haven't done a ton of work in Connecticut, but that's something we can look at.
Yeah, I think we can look at that, we've had other trucking terminals going through here and that was requirement that.
Well, if it's state law, we're gonna comply with it.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to comply with state law, if it's not, then we typically don't put them in. Our trucks go in, the 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 snow melt, we have catch basins in there, the floors are heated, it melts the floor. Melts the snow, dries the floors, we we typically don't. Use them. Our yards are small, so we don't have a ton of space to work with.
It snows on your trucks that are ready for pickup.
I think by state law, we'd have to clear it.
Yeah.
Before it leaves the site.
Yeah.
Pretty sure it is, I'm not a lawyer.
We'll look into it and if it's required, we'll absolutely comply.
So sewer going out, you said you all clear from from those guys, pump station, you said it's adequate, adequate to handle it?
At, correct, adequate.
I think it's the pump station down there, someplace needs to pump up, but, okay, so that's good. Light cuts, I'm sure you provide those with the fixtures.
Correct.
Photometric plan, no? I mean.
Yes.
Oh, I don't have faith in this, okay, good. Dampers are screened, covered? Employee parking is covered. Are there employee parking signs where employee parkings are supposed to go, so?
Yeah, Tim, do we have any site?
Signing on site?
Or do, is it explained?
We don't, we don't mark our spots with employee parking, but if it's required, we can. So at the service shop, we do have the employee parking that's inside the.
Inside the fence.
The fence area, that's where our employees will park, body shop. They'll park in the front of the building, we don't, when it comes to customer wise for the body shop. Think about a wreck truck, they come in on a wrecker, we don't typically have customers come in, they'll, they might come in to pick up the truck or we deliver the truck to them. So we don't have as many customers at the body shop, it's very limited.
Okay, then, the other big question is truck travel on the facility, how are you guys getting out and getting to the highway or wherever you're going to go? Because there's different routes and I know the light by. Uh, the road by. Yeah, Newberry is that like it's backed up continuously and we're going to put fifty two foot trailer trucks on there or fifty four. You're just going to queue that back that way. And the other one way out is by Craftsman, is by Dunkin' Donuts that way, so any, any kind of. Traffic study for that or any kind of impact with that, considering you got sixty five trucks an hour coming out there and.
Yeah, at our at our peak hour, we have sixty five trucks and Tim and Mike.
At our peak hour, we have sixty five vehicles, they're not trucks, they're mostly automobiles. We're not, we're not, we're we're, we are considered low light traffic when it comes to the trucking industry.
Go ahead.
And you're mostly box trucks, tractors, tractor trailer occasionally. Though tractor trails will come off ninety one and fuel there and leave, they they won't stop for service. They're just there to hit one of our four hundred fueling facilities across the country that they get special pricing on. But I wouldn't, I I'll go out and say there's, we're not running sixty five trucks out of that, out of that parking an hour.
I I get that, but the big problem with Newbury Road is chewing up at that light coming out and going back to the highway. We have Lincoln Tech there and we have a couple other places there.
Right.
And we have, there is really heavy there certain times of the day.
And and I think our, Mike Kirk or or transportation engineer could comment on that.
Yeah, so we had looked at the queuing at that location, it's you're saying the westbound location at. I guess that the westbound direction of Newbury Road?
Yes.
Yeah, so the queue lengths. What was that?
Go ahead.
Another queue lengths, we had looked at the existing, the no build and the build and the the difference when you look at those three scenarios is it is the equivalent. Of twenty five feet of queue length or what we estimate as typically like an average, one average car. So the really, the queue length is essentially unchanged with the addition of this volume.
I I don't know if I believe that or not.
The town engineer did, so.
Okay. Uh, what about coming out by the Dunkin' Donuts side, coming out down Craftsman?
Did you look at other routes, Mike?
Because there's freeway dotted there, you can come down Craftsman Road all the way out, but the Dunkin' Donuts, they go right on the Route Five, on the Route Five. Or they can cut.
Right, so.
Street that you cut through behind.
Yeah, so we didn't include the the crap, pretty much we were set, we we sent eighty percent of the of the of traffic exiting the site. To that location that we had just talked about, and then the ten percent would be leaving towards the direction of Craftsman at Prospect Hill Road. So the majority of that exiting traffic would be at the Newbury Road approach.
So most people coming in, so most of your big break, they're going to go out the main road on Newbury, they're not going to come through the site and go out the back. Is is the site that full?
Yep.
They come up anywhere they want to go?
It's it, the site connected.
I didn't know if you're trying to steer traffic out to Newbury, but they can go anywhere they want.
We we don't, we won't steer them out to Newbury ways, any type of. Traffic app will steer them where they're going to go, we we can't really control them once they they leave the property, if you think about it.
Question from Mike, you, Mike, park site, was that, was that three shifts? They run three shifts over there too, right?
I believe so, but they exceed major, major traffic generator criteria. So they had to do that because of the size of the building and the number of, it's also stable.
So that this guy's favorite, I I'm in that area all the time, I never see those trucks, very rarely.
Yeah.
Very rarely do I see those trucks, couple, five in the morning, six in the morning, and there's, how many trucks are hunters of it?
Well, it's a hundred fifty thousand square feet, so even if they did three shifts, this is.
A third of that, so we thought, and I came in, we were going to see trucks everywhere and we don't, we haven't seen, I'm five o'clock in the morning until. Nine at night sometimes, and I buried with two, three trucks. Yeah, so that's that's all the questions I have for now.
Yeah.
So it's a public hearing, so, oh, make it make it kind of, um, over the public if anybody wants to speak on behalf of that occasion. Hey, anybody on Zoom? Okay, anybody on Zoom? Commissioners, do they have any more questions?
Actually, the only question I got, Jim, is it kinda continued what you were talking about, so. Out of your two buildings, the proposed service building and the proposed auto body repair building, which building do you feel is going to have more business? Do you think they'll both have the same amount of business? And the reason.
More, more, more traffic will. More, more traffic will flow through the service because you'll have rental, you'll have.
Exactly. Not gonna go all the way out this. My point is, if you're gonna have a service building that's running your business. How are you gonna get those people to not go up Craftsman Road and force them to go all the way through your parking lot? Past your auto body and onto Newbury Road to get out, most of us are gonna take the path of least resistance out. Which is Craftsman Road up to the traffic light.
Right, close.
But yeah, you say only ten percent of those trucks are gonna go that way. And the other ninety are gonna drive through your parking lot, congest your parking lot, come out to Newbury Road and go up to that traffic light. So I think your traffic study is a little skewed. Hoping that you get to Newbury Road. Does that make sense? Do you see the question? No, I understand this.
No, I, I understand your question, yep.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so I, I, ten percent of that traffic was continuing through to then, and I guess exiting that, pretty much exiting those south, those southern two driveways. We had forty percent of our traffic exiting, actually fifty percent of the traffic exiting between those southern two driveways. Forty of which would be continuing back towards uh, Prospect US Route five. The ten percent would continue through to that signalized intersection to the south. And then the thirty percent would come up and then would come up, make that right turn to then continue um, generally through to uh, ninety-one.
But how much more business is going to be serviced than auto body? You know, you're planning both are fifty-fifties, so you're giving me two different scenarios of percentages that don't add up to one hundred percent.
Can you repeat that question one more time, please?
Yes, do you feel your service building is going to produce seventy-five percent of your business? As opposed to your auto body that produces twenty-five percent of your business?
Traffic.
For traffic, my concern is that you push so much, you're worried about the traffic on Newbury Road. And you're pushing all the traffic that way. But I don't feel that the majority of your business that's going to be done out of the service business. Is going to go that way. So have you fact?
So, so what I'll say is, what I'll say is sixty, I would say sixty, forty, sixty's gonna come out of service. If you need us to, and if you would like, we can extend the study and, and Mike can do a, a, an in-depth study. On Craftsman as well, and we, we're more than welcome to do that, we, we wanna be good. Solid neighbors and wanna be good community people.
Well, that, exactly, and then that's all, yeah, there's.
Just for the record, Newbury is off to the major cut, when everybody goes through there to come home. That's a, a huge, you got people going to Walmart now.
Craftsman doesn't even have heavy traffic.
No, it doesn't, and, but what I'm saying is it didn't, they didn't say everybody was going that way, but you are gonna back up that traffic light there. You're gonna back everything up in the Craftsman Road.
Just like, you know, we, we didn't get a traffic study until today, right?
We had it, I think it's just between that and everything else, you would have needed a forklift to take the packets home.
Any traffic study until today, so.
Okay, yeah, we did submit it with the application in September.
Yeah, we need that. But, but there you go.
So, I, I have one thing that I, I don't want to interrupt you, but I decided, I have one question and one statement, one is. You are hearing testimony from an expert, which carries more weight than a non-expert. And the fact that any, any issues that would happen on Newbury Road would be under the jurisdiction of OSTA. So um, the sixty-five is what they're talking about, the peak hour, if you look at that and he explained it, their average is between thirty and forty trips. Through their average daily traffic, right, so that percentage is basically. It, it shakes itself out based upon the traffic volumes that are there, they're not adding a substantial amount, which is why OSTA didn't feel that. A review was necessary, cause otherwise they would be requiring improvements to those lights of Route five, which is their jurisdiction.
Yeah.
This is me now, one question that I had was if the buildings, if the, if the service portions or repair portions of the building. Uh, are intended to be, if there will be mechanicals. So sometimes what we see is that if they're not heated and cooled, then the doors tend to stay open, which contributes to. Noise and all kinds of other things, but if the buildings are conditioned with heat and cool, the doors closing, the trucks come in. And that keeps the things happening in the building, in the building. So just, right.
Yeah, John, can you, did you hear that question?
So. The service shop, the body shop are not conditioned on the, on the, where the trucks will be um, maintained, no. I, I will jokingly say in the, in the winter, you have air conditioning, in the summer, you have heat. But they, for the most part, doors are shut, if, if it's a nice day, doors are open, I, I can't control them shutting doors. And then opening doors.
So, in, in my opinion, everything's loo- looking pretty good, but the, the big thing is we have to. You know, answer to the people we live with in town and traffic's one of the big things about clogging up Newbury and Craftsman. So we can get those in kinda hashed out and we just don't wanna hear that, gee, you guys approved this and we've got. A bunch of trucks blocking, cause we have Lincoln Tech to call at twelve and they, they block up the whole intersection at twelve o'clock, or twelve thirty. When they get out, they got like a hundred cars coming down there.
All young kids going a hundred miles an hour.
So we just wanna make sure that we're not clogging up any worse than it is already.
I guess if I could just jump in really quick, typically the industry standard and like John said, there would be, the, this could be extended to that southern intersection. If that's a direction we wanna go, I know that the industry standard is that if you're adding a hundred new trips to an intersection. That's when you typically include it within your study, which we aren't really, which we obviously aren't doing in this case at that particular intersection. That's a typical threshold for IT and DOT.
For car or trucks, these are all trucks, right? Well, mostly trucks.
Yes. The, the, the highest, when it, when they say sixty-five vehicles is our highest in an hour. It's right at our shift change. And our shift change are people driving their, their own vehicles in and out, so it's. It would be, the highest would be with, with car vehicles, sixty-five includes cars, not all trucks. And if the truck, if it's trucks, it's not all trailer, it's more box, more tractor. Yeah, it's, you know, I, I know, we're, we're definitely not a truck terminal, I'm trying to explain, it's hard to explain because people don't understand it. How our business works, we don't have trucks rolling in there left and right, we, we only have so many bays we can work on a truck at a time, so we only have so many. U- units, we call them, cycling in and out.
Okay, well. I wanna keep the public hearing open. Next, we, we guys have some, a little bit of work to do.
And, and just so I can be clear, so I make sure that, that um, Mike has direction. You want us to adjust the distribution coming out and we would show sixty percent of trips. In that peak hour coming out from service and forty percent coming out from the body shop. And then you want us to expand the intersections that we looked at, is it just one more intersection that you want?
To the Crafts and the Craftsman.
Craftsman and Route five.
Yeah.
But those are the two. That backup.
And then you got other stuff, like you gotta move the building two feet, so you gotta show that, are you gonna redo the plans, I guess, you're gonna move the building two feet?
It'd be a, a revision pending a decision.
Yeah, we had intended to do that, it's like a condition of approval, but if it's, if you guys wanna see the two feet, I could just revise the site plan sheet or something too. I don't wanna read you all fifty-two sheets. It, it's.
Strikes me that um. Ruth Ann's memo, now that so many of the questions have been answered. Her proposed motion. Um, needs to be updated to reflect all this discussion.
So can I make two points to that? So one would be that we would absolutely include or suggest, commission includes. An additional, I think it would be I G, that they make all necessary revisions as presented in the memo. The other thing that I wanted to mention while the hearing is open is. There had been some question and I think for clarity and, and just going back um, after this. I, I would suggest we consider adding a general condition to clarify that this approval. Applies to the portion of the property as depicted on the site plan, it does not modify or supersede any previously issued approvals.
Right, that.
Mr. Dearborn has a special permit and it's for that portion of the property and this is not touching that in any way, but I wanna, I think I want it to be clear.
Yeah.
So that would be a proposed condition.
Yeah. I think it makes sense.
Make sure we're all.
Language on the privacy slats has to change, cause they say if it's not adequately remaining street, so the whole fence line wouldn't have to have. The privacy.
And then the, the trucks per hour when they haul it, so, you know, they're out of there.
Yeah, and so that um, I mentioned that because obviously if it's gonna stay in town. Then the recei- the, the receiving property or properties, there's no way one property is gonna take thirty thousand cubic yards, but. What we don't want is what we've seen, whereas another site is the recipient, and all of a sudden we've got. Right, so they don't need a special permit to pull it out, but if it stays in town, those recipient properties need. So this is just a clarification that when these guys start executing the site plan. They need to know where it's going, if it's staying here, we gotta know.
The other thing that needs to be added is they ask for fifty-foot buffer by the residents, so we need a motion to approve that.
And the snow scrapers.
And, yeah, something.
You know, you've got some little bit of work to do, but I think we're on the right path.
I think it's so.
It's, it's. Definitely doable.
And for some of these items on the, on the site plan, the, the two feet, are you wanting us to do it as a condition of approval? Or do you want us to come in with like one sheet where it shows the change?
I think if. Mike creates or Ruth Ann creates a new motion, has all those things.
So will you have, well, I don't have a permit right now, but your plans from the building department will then have to be changed because you're.
We haven't submitted.
You haven't submitted, yeah, but I'm saying you might have to change all that when you.
No, so.
Two people make a big difference.
Yeah, but typically what happens is after we get the zoning approval, we create like the final set of plans. And then that goes with the building permit plan, so we, we have time to still modify it.
And, and normally, just for record, the building department here has been doing a great job, we do building department, and they actually looked at the plans. Ahead of time, saw them.
Right.
We know that he, you know, he played in, it was the favorite board, it has no bearing on us.
Right.
Whatsoever, that's the next step in the process.
Correct.
Well, now we have a new building official, they're actually looking at the plans ahead of time, which gonna make your life a lot easier. Down the road, since they already saw him already.
Yeah, I know Ken, I've worked with him.
Yes, Ken's, it's, it's pretty good.
Yeah.
So we're very happy with him, so.
Alright, so I think, so it sounds like what you really want me to come back with next time is some updates on the traffic and then maybe I'll work with staff. To go over these conditions of approval, so that is all in the motion and we're on the same page.
Yeah.
Okay.
Check on the ice scraper thing and I'll add little, little details up and we're, we're looking uh, pretty good.
Alright, thank, thank you guys.
Alright, thanks, thank you for coming.
Excellent, I think, wow.
Thank you. Did you bring one copy of the traffic center, how many can you submit?
Tim, how, how many copies of the traffic study can we submit? And I can also just print out like the executive summary, just like the first twenty-four pages, not all those like, you know, all that stuff.
So these play up are very good, very detailed, or maybe just a base bunching up.
Yeah, you could.
I could really think, that's what I print out, I don't even print out, like all that stuff. Yeah.
Have that and then we'll keep this as the record.
They don't, you don't need this stuff, right, you don't care about those sheets, yeah, I'll print out those first twenty-four pages.
We have a PDF of the whole.
Yeah, okay.
You also did a great job with the um, with funds with the staff coming.
Yeah. Right, right, Pat.
When's your next meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, when would you need stuff by then?
Packages go out with uh, Thursday before the meeting, so when saying.
Alright, Mike, no pressure.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Oh yeah, we have an extra week, October has five weeks.
Oh, perfect, okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Oh, continue, oh, sorry. Um, I don't have a motion to continue the. Public hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on PZ twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-five. For seventy-four Newbury Road and nine Craftsman Road till our next regular meeting, November fourteenth.
Okay, motion made by Ann, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay. So next, moving on, the new public hearing is gonna be going back in order. Uh, the Town of East Windsor is requesting a text amendment to create a new section, Warehouse Point Design District, WPDD. Within East Windsor zoning regulations.
So um. This is obviously the text amendment that kinda we've been working on for a significant amount of time. I just would note that um, it's not included in the packet, but we did a write-up. That was included in the Five Village Voice to basically explain what we were doing and. Based upon the timing, because we have to write those articles like six weeks out. The. The way it was explained is that the commission were beginning, beginning the public hearing process in October, continuing it into November. Um, because they wouldn't necessarily have any time for this meeting, so. I don't, it's up to you, I can go through this, there's no one in the room, or we can continue it to the next meeting when they will have read that article and they're, will like to be people here.
I would say let's continue it.
I agree, cause it's important to public hearings.
Yeah, there was legal notice in the newspaper, but.
But what we wanted is input from the public.
I don't want, yes, have them miss something.
So I guess I'll have a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue. PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three. The town of East Windsor's application for a text amendment to create a new section. Warehouse Point Design District within the East Windsor zoning regulations till our next regular meeting on November fourteenth.
Motion made by Ann, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next on. New public hearings is Town of East Windsor requesting a text amendment to section six oh one dash two, number of parking spaces. Mike, you're up.
So this one is a little bit more simple, um. There is a draft amendment in your packet. There's sort of two components to this, one. Um, following um. The state's passage of uh, public act. Um, I believe it was twenty-one, twenty-nine, uh, it specifically. Required that towns not demand more parking than um, one space per a single bedroom or studio. And so we are basically amending our regulations to. Align with the public act, we do not have a choice in the matter. The other thing that we are doing is uh, removing the um. Church category for par- parking, um, so we have places of public assembly, which is one space for three. Uh, seats, but then for churches, we are requiring one space for five. Not regulate how people assemble for religious purposes differently than how they assemble for non-religious purposes. So because they're going there to be a church, they now need five spaces, one space per five seats. Whereas if they were going there for a professional seminar or a training, they would need to, only one space per three. Uh, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act protects that and. Um, since we're already in the section, we decided to just simplify it, remove it. So churches now become places of public assembly, which they are, and they'll fall into that category. Because we're going from one to five to one to three, there's no issues with non-conformities because the production gets. Reduced, so that is a pretty simple tweak. Um, the third change is to create a category for self-service, self-service storage facilities. So we've had a lot of those uses and this was proposed prior to the last application with the commission and we kinda went through that. So this proposes one space plus one space per twenty units. So you basically one employee space or one maintainer space, and then for every twenty units, an additional space. We kind of use that based upon previous applications, um, so that number if you want can be adjusted further, but that to me. Um, seemed like a good starting point, so it's kinda where.
One space for building, pretty much.
Right.
Yeah, I'll let, any word that?
Let cover backwards to the. The uh, place with the ten buildings there at Abbey Road and cover for Hatton Park.
No, 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 they submitted previous.
Alright, it sounds okay, so I guess I'll um.
Motion to approve.
And take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the application, PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six and text amendment. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six and text amendment. To section six oh one point two off-street parking regulations, the applicant was the Town of East Windsor. Finding the proposed amendments are consistent with the East Windsor Plan of Conservation and Development. And recently passed legislation, Public Act twenty-one. Dash twenty-nine. With the condition that the regulation. Will be effective December first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion made by Ann, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any discussion? All, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Old business, none, new business, none, other business, none. Business meeting, none, executive session, none. Motion for adjournment?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion made by Frank, second.
Second.
Second by Dave, any discussion? All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Good night. Good job, everybody.[1799.04]